I'll count us in, five, four, three, two, one. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of March 8th, 2021. I would ask you all to rise for singing A Voe Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir, individual from our Boys Choir. Just making sure we're ready to go here. Okay, perfect. Moving on to the first item of our agenda today, the adoption of the previous council minutes. I have councillor Menhas.
Thank you, Mayor Jackie Clayton. I move to council adopt the minutes of the City Council meeting held on Monday, February 22, 2021 as presented.
Okay, I think it's actually councillor Menhas, it's as amended?
As amended, membership.
All right, we're going with the first one. Ms. Karpisiuski corrected me here, we're good now. Look at that technology, instantly updated, that's great. Anyways, so as presented, I will call the motion now. Please vote. And if you don't have your screen pop up, just hold your hand up and I'll... Councillor Friesen, how would you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. And councillor Blackburn is currently not here. So, uh, so that is carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to the next item of business, adoption of the agenda. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm not sure if the motion changes with our new software where the agenda's already been updated, but I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented. And I'm not sure if I need to say with the amendment of item 6.1, public member appointments?
With the addition, yeah, with the addition, perfect.
Sure, so then I'll say with that addition.
Great, thank you councillor Bressi. Seeing no comments or questions, I will call the motion, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended. And councillor Friesen?
In favor. Sorry, my icon gone missing on my screen, I'll try to find it.
Yeah, no worries, perfect, thank you. And that motion is carried unanimously, perfect. And moving next to our delegations, under, just a reminder, if you'd like to be a delegation, there are two options at every council meeting for you at 3 o'clock as well as our evening session at 6 o'clock. The Community Foundation let us know ahead of time that they are, they filled out a delegation request form and they are here to speak on in regards to their vital signs. If you're here with the Community Foundation, if you could turn your camera on now and then, great, thank you. And then please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clayton and your fellow councillors and city admin team. My name's Laura Lavalley, I'm the CEO of the Community Foundation of Northwestern Alberta. And today with me I have April Weevil, who is with Regatta Communications. She's the contractor that's responsible for the research and developing the Vital Signs.
Perfect, thank you. If you would like to go ahead and then at the end I'll provide an opportunity for council to ask questions.
Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes, we are.
So, thank you in advance for your time today, hearing about our Vital Signs project for 2021. A lot of you I know are familiar with the project in that the city has been partnered with the Community Foundation in helping to produce it since its inception in 2011. Those of you that aren't aware, it's a publication that we send out every two years. And really, this slide sort of just organizes what it is that we're trying to achieve through this publication. So we're really looking at trying to understand our community trends and our current and emergent issues. Specifically this year, now more than ever, we really feel like this publication is going to be very pertinent in moving forward through, through the pandemic. It's a comprehensive report on the state of the wellbeing of our region. It's community-led, obviously we, we engage a committee throughout the planning and development of the report to ensure that we have all the stakeholders at the table that can weigh in on the issues and the things that we need to be looking at. We know that we need to understand both data and perceptions and opinions, so this report certainly does that. We connect local, provincial and national statistics to provide a snapshot of what life in our community looks like. This is just a little snapshot from Vital Signs of 2019. Some of you may remember that the focus of that was to kind of zero in on the sense of belonging in our region. The city has been funders of the Vital Signs project since 2011. We're very grateful to partner along with the city to produce this really important publication. Obviously, we feel very much like this publication is a reputable source for data. It's used by municipalities like yourselves, as well as the county and the MD of Greenview, as well as outside municipalities to just help them get a clear picture of what's going on in our region. I'm pleased to say that I did have an opportunity this morning to meet with the County of Grand Prairie Council and they have moved forward with a motion to support our Vital Signs project in the amount of $20,000. And it also have a commitment from the MD of Greenview for $10,000 towards the publication. So, this year, we really feel that it's important for us to look at Vital Signs through the lens of the COVID-19 pandemic. It goes without saying that there's significant impact in our region due to the pandemic. And we really want to examine what exactly that impact looks like and then also talk about recovery. We know that we need to have a plan to, to move forward and we, we hope that this publication is able to show us some of the, the areas that we may be able to base our decisions on with evidence, data-based decisions. One of the things that I have noticed is that COVID-19 has presented us with all, too many opportunities to have to make decisions during uncertainty. I think every one of us, no matter what it is that we do, are having to make a lot of decisions without knowing what's, what's going to be changing in our, our situation. We also wanted to look at this, this project as, how do we show what the, how the communities around us have demonstrated resiliency? We know that there's been a lot of it, I can tell you that the Community Foundation has connected with over 200 organizations across Northwestern Alberta through the pandemic and there's incredible stories of resiliency. So we want to zero in on that and, and see where those stories are and what the data is behind those stories. We want to focus on collaborations, we know there's been many. To get through something like this and build back better, there probably needs to be many more. We want to look at how we can, information can bring sectors together. Recovery from COVID-19 is not specific to one particular sector. As you know, it's going to take a lot of collaboration between the sectors and information is key in allowing that to happen. Gaps and fault lines were a huge thing with the pandemic. We all know within our personal lives, there's been little gaps and fault lines of things that we just didn't know how to deal with when the pandemic hit and in the years since it came about. We want to look at how did communities successfully pivot? We know there's been so much of that, so we want to see exactly what those, what the data is that shows us what is being done. We want to see who has impacted the most. We know that there's certain populations that have been, experienced adverse impacts to the pandemic, such as our school-aged kids that suddenly were learning online or our seniors that are experiencing isolation. A very vibrant oilfield sector that is now experiencing widespread unemployment. And, and many, many more. We also want to look at how do we plan best for recovery? Without there being a playbook and us able to look back on historical situations, it's really tough to determine what is the path forward, what's been done before. And so Vital Signs 2021 really aims to provide that solid data for us to gather our information and make solid decisions based on what the data says. I'll just quickly touch on our timelines for Vital Signs timeline. We are looking at still, working with a launch date of October for 2021. It's important to us to stick to that and get that information in the hands of our region as fast as we can. Although we are looking at, you know, spending the time to do that ongoing committee consultation to make sure that we have the right data. We know it's really important, especially for, you know, the city of Grand Prairie and the other municipalities that have partnered with us to be able to have a little bit of input on what exactly the information is that we gather, that what would be most helpful for, for you as our decision-makers to help move forward. Here's our budget. I would just like to point out, as I mentioned earlier, that the County of Grand Prairie and the MD of Greenview have committed the, the $20,000 and $10,000 respectively. We are seeking $20,000 from the city of Grand Prairie, which is consistent to asks that have been made in the past. We are definitely working with a more pared-down budget, recognizing that there needs to be prudency and efficiency found in budgets now more than ever. So we have reduced the amount of printing that we're doing with the publication, moving towards more digital distribution. We do want to make sure that we can produce a very quality-filled product for the, the digital distribution, but we have reduced that substantially. I have had communication with the Community Social Development Department within the city. They had mentioned that there may be difficulty with access to funding that we've had from the past because the, the same area of that budget is no longer available. But I did want to show the, the councillors all of the, the numbers that we have in front of us and I really hope that you can see the value now more than ever on why this Vital Signs project is really pertinent, solid information that people are looking for. I think, you know, I'm sure that you can all relate, whenever we're all out in a, a social setting or whatever that looks like now, there's a lot of discussion about the pandemic and we're all talking about things that we, we think are true. We're making our own inferences and we're, we're jumping, you know, based on our own experience to, you know, kind of solidifying that to our own truth. And we want to really make that, make a data available so that, you know, people can, can be really discussing the, the current issues as they relate to, to really evidence-based data. Most importantly, we want to make sure that we're breaking down the silos between sectors. So I, I talked about this before and, and what I want to point out is just how dedicated our team is to working with a committee to, to make this publication as best as it can be. So in the past, we've worked with representatives from the Indigenous population, Grand Prairie Regional College, all three municipalities, the RCMP, school divisions and Alberta Health Services, just to name a few. And it's certainly our, our commitment to carry on with that committee collaboration to make sure that we have a product that serves the needs of our region to produce this data. So I really feel like no matter who you are, you're going to see the relevancy of this publication. There'll be pieces of it that really do apply to everyone as we navigate the path forward from COVID-19. That concludes the formal part of my presentation, might certainly be happy to take any questions if anyone.
Perfect, thank you so much for the presentation. I will look for comments or questions from council. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much, Ms. Lavalley and Ms. Weevil for presenting today and for the work that you do with the Community Foundations and with the Vital Science Project, which I personally believe is an invaluable resource for decision-makers, community builders, anyone who cares about their community or wants to know what's actually happening in the community. You know, since its inception, I've used it broadly to make various decisions at this table and in my own capacity as a community builder prior to council. So I'm, I'm very supportive of, of this project and very supportive to see how it turns out. I don't actually have a question for you, but I do have a question for administration. To administration, in regards to the source of funding, if council were to decide upon funding the $20,000 as requested, where, where might we be able to, to pull that money from in our current budget?
Ms. Whiteway, I think you're on the call, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We, administration could look at some unallocated funds within future, future expenditures or, pardon me, we would have sufficient to cover the $20,000.
Beautiful, thank you, that's all I have and thanks for coming in today, ladies.
Any further comments or questions for, for the delegation? All right, seeing none, so if you're not familiar, Ms. Lavalley, Ms. Weevil, we do our delegation business at the end of our meeting. So you're more than happy to stay on, I just ask you to turn off your camera or someone from administration could get back to you tomorrow or the following day. Great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, I'm not aware of any other delegations for this portion of the meeting, so we'll move on to reports. Item 6.1, public member appointment. I'll look for a member of council to deal with this business. Councillor Menhas.
I'll move the motion and make the three-year appointment for Linda, right?
Okay, so as councillor Menhas, the council appointment of Linda Murphy to the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2023. Comments or questions on the motion? I see no one, I'll call the motion then. Please vote. Councillor Friesen, are you, okay? Councillor Friesen, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Mayor Clayton is on too now, it looks like.
Yes. So we'll revote there because I see councillor Blackburn has joined us now. So we'll just refresh that and vote again. Okay, so the vote has been cleared, now councillor Blackburn will have an opportunity to vote. So I'll call the question, all those in favor, please vote. And councillor Friesen, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. And that motion is carried unanimously, thank you for that. Moving on to the second item of business. Councillor Menhas, did you want to continue?
Yeah, I can.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, my apologies, nope, that's the only item of business. Perfect, thank you for that. All right, we're moving on to committee business now. Item number seven, under committee business, first up, we have the Community Services Committee meeting from March 2nd and Chair councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Community Service Committee meeting held Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 as presented.
See no comments or questions or concerns or errors, so I will call the question, please vote. Councillor Friesen, how do you vote?
In favor and I should be able to, I've just switched devices, so I, I should be able to join electronically after. able to join electronically after this vote.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Counselor Blackburn, we just, oh, never mind, we're good. And that is carried unanimously, thank you so much. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. I would move that council um approve an allocation of the 2021 large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of $50,000 to the 2021 Grand Prairie Buckwild PBR event. And just to speak to this, it's a relatively new event in the city that despite COVID a, and all the difficulties it introduced, introduces, this year it went well. It raised our profile, I think it did what the intent of this grant is meant to do, and it'll be even better next year when we can actually pack out those stadiums to ta- to take in a unique event in our region. So I hope that council approves this. Uh, last thing worth highlighting is there was actually an ask for $75,000 from the city. Uh, this $50,000 grant though, it fits, is how much we can award, we'll stick it within the council-approved policy for this grant.
Perfect, thank you for that, Counselor Bressi. Comments, did anybody have any comments or questions in regards to this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you, in favor.
Thank you. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counselor Bressi, uh any other additional items you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, or sorry, I do have one more motion.
Oh, apologies.
And that is, I'd move that council allocate in the $10,000 to the Center for Creative Arts Alberta Culture Day. Uh, just to speak to this, it's a longstanding event in our community that this year was forced to go online, online because of COVID, and that was so successful that the intent with future years is to have both an in-person and an online component. So it's one example of how these COVID-19 times, as much as none of us want to have them, will be hopefully having some positive impacts on our community in the long term. Last thing I'll highlight about this is this was the first grant funding that went th- that went through our brand-new community enhancement advisory committee. And so this is a recommendation we got through a new process that council set up, and so that's exciting to see it.
Perfect, thank you, Counselor Bressi. I'm just gonna read the motion again because you did cut out there again, and if it's not what you intend, just let me know. The motion is that council approved the allocation of arts development festival funding in the amount of $10,000 to the Center of Creative Arts, uh Center for Creative Arts for Alberta Culture Days. Perfect, thank you for that. I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Friesen, how do you vote? Oh, you're in? Okay, we're good.
That's okay.
There we go. Sorry, we're just having a little bit of a technical difficulty? And I think we're back up. So that motion was carried unanimously? Perfect, thank you. And Counselor Bressi, any other meeting highlights?
Yeah, one piece, uh, one delegation we received was from the Grand Prairie Curling Club, which is applying to host the 2022 BP Men's Provincial Curling Championships. So it's an event that sounds exciting, will bring a lot of people to our community for a large number of days, so that's exciting. A committee directed the mayor to write a letter in support of this event. And then a couple things worth highlighting from our director service update was just increasing programming happening in East Link Center due to provincial restrictions easing up. The Storm have been given the go-ahead to start their season, they're practicing now, and the first games in the league will be on March 12th. They'll be, spectators will be online only, but at least our players can be playing on that ice, so that's exciting. And last thing the community will be glad to hear is that our sweeper fleet has been well attended to and will be ready to go as soon as it looks like we're gonna be get, as soon as we're really confident we're gonna be having no more snow this season. So we're ready to clean our streets.
Perfect, thank you for that, Counselor Bressi, and I can confirm that the letter of support did go out, so uh hopefully we'll be positive, uh we'll be successful in our bid for that. It'd be great to have another event of that caliber in our community. So thank you for your update. We'll move on to item 7.2, the Corporate Services Committee and Counselor, Counselor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, move the council adopt the minutes of uh Cooperative Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 as presented.
Great, thank you for that. I will, see, I see no comments or questions on that, I'll call the motion. Please vote. And that motion is carried. Thank you for that, uh Counselor Minhas. Is there any highlights from the meeting, from your meeting you'd like to um highlight to council?
Uh, yeah, I do have, yes, give me one second. Yeah, there you go. So the assessment, highlights, our assessment and taxation, the tax sale is scheduled for March 19th. Administration has been contacted with all the property owners and the finance auditor are on site for this year-end work. Highlight statement will be presented to committee next month. The 2020 MSI fund has been, has not been received from the provincial. Administration managed to cash flow with the small use of line of credit and cash out the investment. The province budget was released last week and will be incorporated into 2022 budget for communication marketing, the final engagement session of the Avondale area redevelopment planning will be take place today at 5:30, I think, or a lot. Residents are invited to register to attend the online session to provide input or, or comments. Feedback being sought until tomorrow and development will be activated at reception center. Online survey is located on the city website and available for the resident to provide input on the type of activity and program hours of service inclusive and featured. That's updated for me.
Great, thank you, Ca- Counselor Minhas. Just to um, just to clarify for anybody that was watching, the um Avondale area redevelopment plan took place the day of our committee meeting, not uh today. So if you're planning to head there tonight, i- it, it's already happened, but uh just in case somebody was planning to attend. Perfect, thank you for that. Uh, I see no comments or questions on Counselor Minhas's report, so I'll move along to item 7.3, the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee. And I'm just, sorry, I'm just moving through my escribe here. And Counselor Bressi.
Hey, Mayor Clayton, I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting held Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 as presented.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions or concerns arising from that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that is carried unanimously. Moving along, Counselor Bressi, any meeting highlights that you wanted to bring up?
Two things I'll highlight is committee received a report on gaps in the city's active transportation network, and it was very interesting to see the capital needs that will be required in the future should we choose to close some of those, some of those gaps. And then from the director service update, the one thing I'll highlight is Grand Prairie, you'll re- you'll recall council that a while ago we applied to be designated as a B-city, and we've officially received that designation, which is pretty sweet to hear. That's all I've got to report, so we buzzed through the rest of that meeting.
Perfect, thank you so much, Chair Bressi, for that. Moving along, item, item number 7.4, the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting, Counselor Bress, or sorry, Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Protective and Social Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, March 20, March 2nd, 2021 as presented.
Great. Seeing no concerns, errors, or omissions, I'll call the question, please vote. And that motion is carried unanimously. Uh, business arising, Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. We had quite a bit of discussion at committee to, to get to council here. I'm not sure if administration needs to, I guess I'll make the first motion here, that council give the first reading to bylaw C-1394 being the vehicle for higher bylaw.
Great. There's no debate or discussion on first reading, so I'll call the question, please vote. That is carried unanimously. Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'll just make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw C-1394.
Sure, and I apologize, um, I see Director Manuel's on and, and I'm just going to uh give Director Manuel an opportunity uh to introduce this bylaw a little bit before we, I know it's a little bit out of order and I apologize for that, uh but if it's uh all right with Ms. Karpischewski, we're gonna have Director Manuel. Um, just give us a quick background on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, that is in order.
Thank you for that. Director Manuel.
Uh, certainly, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Clayton. So the vehicle for hire bylaw is uh coming forward today in preparation for the May 1st launch of the new and revised business licensing bylaw. The existing by, business license bylaw that went into effect in 2002 included the vehicle for hire provisions within it. In preparation of the new business license bylaw, it was determined that um a independent vehicle for hire bylaw was desirable, and as such, uh, has been hived off from the uh soon-to-be implemented uh business license bylaw. Uh, as a result of um several council and public engagement sessions, as well as stakeholder, industry stakeholder uh consultations, we put together a, a really robust and modern uh vehicle hire bylaw that uh allows flexibility for the industry to progress as technologies and um different customer demands um progress through time. And this is gonna really represent a move forward with how uh vehicle for hire legislation has been applied in the city of Grand Prairie, and also provides a more even playing field for participants within the industry. So uh, you know, we're pleased to uh have this coming forward today. From a timeline perspective, the date that's important is that uh we have a approved bylaw that's uh in effect for May 1st, which is the date that the existing provisions would expire. Uh, with that said, there was some discussion that it did occur at committee, and um I suspect there'll be some follow-up, following dialogue here, uh probably prior to second or third reading, and uh administration does have some prepared material uh for those questions when they arrive.
Perfect, thank you. Any comments or questions for administration before we move on to the business arising? Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I did have a couple questions for administration just as I dug into the bylaw and got a chance to read over the weekend, um, or got to think about it more over the weekend. And one was a question about section 38 of the bylaw, is a 10-year prohibition on people from getting chauffeur's licenses if they've been convicted of certain criminal or drug offenses? I'm just wondering if there was any conversation at the administrative level of having a longer or lifetime prohibition for certain offenses, I think especially of certain sexual or violent offenses.
Director Manuel or Mr. Hibbert?
Yeah, hi, um, so uh, uh, through the, the chair, um, as far as having further conversation about uh if there should be like longer prohibitions of chauffeur permits, uh, there was no uh conversation about that. This is actually an increase over the previous, uh, previous bylaw, which is only a five-year. If somebody had a criminal record or sexual offense show up on their, on their check as they come in for an application, it would be a five-year period as it is right now. And this, the way this bylaw's been drafted, uh pulls from the Transportation Network Company regulation, which is 10-year. So uh, to be fair across the industry, uh, we felt that it would be appropriate to increase ours from five to 10.
Right, and um, is there anything in the bylaw that would allow the licensed inspector to deny a license on their own discretion if there was something very concerning somebody's background?
Director Manuel?
Uh, I'll, I'll refer to Sean as well, but the answer is yes, I'll allow Sean to provide the detail.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Hibbert?
Uh, yes, there is provisions within the bylaw to allow that, uh, it's um, sorry, I don't have the exact section here right now uh in front of me, but it essentially is that if there is uh anything of, of uh poor character, uh, even if it's not a criminal code-related, if we deem it uh sufficiently enough to deny them, uh, the applicant, um, a chauffeur permit, then we may do so.
Great, and then that would be appealable to committee too as they felt you were being too overhanded, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, Director Manuel, did you have something to add?
I was covered, thank you.
I keep missing your hand on the way, sort of, and then it's removed, so, just to clarify. All right, uh, thank you for that. Any further comments or questions for administration before uh Counselor Bressi?
If nobody else in the queue, I've had, I've got, uh, I've got a couple more.
Perfect.
I'm wondering if there's been any conversation around, I know that there's been a communication plan in terms of engagement for this bylaw. I'm wondering if there's been any conversation or thought put into a communications plan after the bylaw is passed to make sure the public knows their rights under the bylaw, especially I've heard concerns in the community of people not being aware that there is recourse to the city to make a complaint if they had a bad experience in a vehicle for hire.
Mr. Hibbert? Director Manuel?
Yeah, uh, through, through the chair there, um, there hasn't been co- like a whole lot of talk about uh communication plan afterwards, but uh there is something that I'm intending to put together in my conversations with the stakeholders. Uh, is, there's a lot of new provisions within this bylaw, uh, who can do what as far as ride shares, designated driving services, taxis and whatnot, of uh having that communication out there so that they're all well aware. And then as well as doing a public engagement, you know, uh, campaign just so that uh the public and, and the users are aware too of their rights and getting, that was one of the things that came from the public consultation session, was people didn't know who to call uh to, to lodge a concern or complaint. Uh, we really want to get that information out there so we can be more engaged with the industry and uh, and yeah, help with any concerns that come up.
Awesome, glad that's on the radar, thank you.
Ms. White Way, did you have something to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, just that um it is on uh comms radar and uh her open and willing to support anything that uh is needed for the communication of this bylaw, so.
Thank you. Did you have something else, Counselor Bressi?
Uh, I'm done questions, although uh there's some amendments I'd love to see made, so I'm wondering if you'd like me to try the first stake at amendments or if you want to let somebody else get in?
Yeah, let's, uh, I'll just uh double-check that there's no further comments or questions for administration before I move on to uh business arising. And then I will give it to Counselor Palat uh for the next motion, and then I'll turn it to you, to Counselor Bressi, for any amendments that you may have.
I just, I think for, I, I think I had made second motion.
Okay. So currently on the floor, uh, the motion is council gives second reading to bylaw C- dash 1394. So uh now Counselor Bressi, you said you had an amendment.
Yeah, so one was, and I have a sense that this is probably what administration was talking about when they said they'd prepared some potential things for us, but I'd like to make an amendment to uh, to require companies to offer electronic payment to customers, and I'm open to administration's recommendation on how to make an amendment like that.
Director Manuel?
Uh, certainly. So administration's recommendation in regard to electronic payment would be to add section eight, sub one, sub D to allow for electronic payment. So it builds off an existing section, um, which I'll go to. It's a, a person driving a vehicle for hire must, and then this section would read allow for electronic payment.
Great. Counselor Bressi?
In that case, I would let, I would move that committee amend the bylaw by adding section eight, sub one, sub D to read allow for electronic payment.
Comments or questions on the amendment?
Sorry, can I just speak to it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to speak to this, I know that when I, when I hear concerns of the Yeah, just to speak to this, I know that when I, when I hear concerns of the public, one of the biggest concerns I hear is people getting into a cab and intending to pay with their credit card and then being told, oh, sorry, my machine's broken, and being forced to go to the bank and take out, put more time on the meter, maybe pay, pay an ATM fee to give cash to the, cash to the cab, which also can create issues for them if they're hoping to get reimbursement from either work or because it's a medical appointment or something like that. So I think electronic payment has, has real, is important for consumers to be able to access. I also know that there are some safety concerns with cabs, especially when they're being taken late at night, and not requiring customers to carry a large amount of cash, I think will make them be and feel safer too. So I think this is reasonable to require electronic payment if the customer asks, so I hope the council will support this amendment.
Great. Thank you for that. Counselor Blackburn?
Just a question for administration on this. I truly believe that this is an important amendment to make. I wonder how it will affect people who already have a license and, and may not be offering electronic payment.
Director Manuel?
Certainly. It's a fair question. So, two things. One, this bylaw would not come into effect until May 1st, so we will make sure that we message the pertinent changes to all the particular industry stakeholders. That being said, to the best of my recollection, all of the existing vehicle for hire licensees offer electronic payment options. Now, they may offer it in different forms, but yeah, I believe they do all intend to provide them.
Perfect. Does that answer your question, Counselor Blackburn? Great. Counselor Minhaus?
Yeah, I like this amendment, but the question is like if somebody just paid with a Visa or debit machine, they can get the invoice, but if somebody paid the cash, do the, then it'll be enforced to the government to see that or no? I just wonder if somebody paid the cash and they still have to electronic, pay stuff?
Director Manuel?
If I understand the question correctly, so they still can pay with cash. It's not that they can't pay with cash. And if they required a receipt, a receipt could be provided.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I definitely wanna support this motion. I am a little concerned though, and I appreciate that administration saying to put it under section 8.1D. This is driver conduct, and I guess I'm still coming back to that. I'm wondering if this should be under five, section five with display of information. I've had complaints with people that although they do take credit card, when they got in the vehicle, there was no way to know they could take a credit card. So I'm just wondering if Counselor Bressi is concerned about that. I wanna support the motion as is and maybe look at a subsequent motion as well, but if that's a concern of yours, and if he'd be looking at amending that, or if he's fine with the, how administrations mention it now.
Counselor Bressi?
I've, I've got a curious here what, here what Director Manuel has to say, and then I might have an opinion on it.
Okay, Director Manuel?
I have a subsequent motion prepared, so if either Counselor Bressi or Counselor Palat would like to make that, it would address my concern.
Great. Yeah, I, with that, I think I'm, I think I'm fine with my amendment now. I think that Counselor Palat might be talking about something slightly different than I'm trying to address here. I'm not, I'm not quite sure, but I think that I'm, I'm comfortable with this being in section eight, 'cause I think it'll get done what I, what I think needs get done. That being said, there are a few other amendments that I still think this bylaw needs.
Counselor Min, or sorry, Counselor Palat, you had a comment?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess for me, I'll still support it, 'cause I wanna see us do that, but I'll, I'll be curious to see what Counselor Bressi has for other amendments. I just, good administration, or I guess, or Director Manuel, could you let me know the wording you're thinking about with section five, what you would be, what administration saw for potential wording, just so it is actually displayed in the vehicles that they do accept a credit card?
Director Manuel?
Certainly. So the wording that administration recommends would be add section 5, sub 1, sub D to read payment rates and terms.
So, so thanks for that. And I guess, Mayor Clayton, I would look at probably making a subsequent amendment motion to say rates and terms, but I'm just wondering if that could be wrapped up in, in Counselor Bressi's motion, or if we, if it would be a subsequent motion would be better.
Well, recommend, administration right now is recommending it in two different parts, so if everyone's okay, I'd prefer to leave it split and, and then we'll just vote on the amendment that's currently on the floor. Counselor Bressi, did you wish to close?
I'm okay. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
Perfect. Seeing no further comments or questions on the amendment, everyone's clear what the amendment is, what we're voting on. So this is the amendment, as Counselor Bressi mentioned, in regards to item 8.1, section D, which will add the option for electronic payment. So I will call to question. Please vote. That motion is carried unanimously. I'll go to you, Counselor Palat, first.
So I'm not sure if I'm back on the main motion or if I'm okay to amend.
You're, sorry, you're looking, I thought you had an amendment, and then I know Counselor Bressi had another one too.
Okay, so for an amended motion, amending motion, I'd like to add that we insert the section 5.1D as well to display the rate and the payment methods rate on the vehicle.
Just a question for Director Manuel. Does that cover the intent?
What I would suggest is say payment rates, terms, and, hmm, payment rates, methods and terms. Might cover all three?
So then the display, the following information would be the payment method and the rates and terms, correct? Questions, Counselor Bressi?
Thank you. A concern I've got about this is I think this really makes sense for a taxi or another vehicle that has a set rates. Where I'm concerned about this is transportation network vehicles, some companies will flex pricing depending on what time of day it is, and that may be very dynamic as day goes. I'm also worried about chauffeur companies which might have, they might have pre-booked rates where they've negotiated before, and it might be different for every customer, and I don't know if it's fair to them to let every customer see the, see the rates that are in there. So I'm, I'm uneasy about this. I definitely support this for taxis. I, I'm uneasy about it for every type of vehicle for hire.
Okay, so did you want Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. No, I, I think that's a fair comment that Counselor Bressi just made, so I'm just wondering if administration, with, with, just trying to get my head around how the rest of the policy would lay out, if we added the, inserted that this was to be displayed for taxi cabs only, if that would work within the bylaw?
I'll go to Director Manuel and then Counselor Friesen.
Yes, thank you. Fair point. We considered that as well. It, it is covered off. That's the benefit behind us going to section five is within section five, there's caveats in there that that information through subsequent sections can be provided electronically. So if it's Uber, for instance, it doesn't have to be posted in the vehicle because it's available on your app, right? Also, with existing taxi rates, right now, there's stickers identify that contract rates, like negotiated rates can exist. So the default in a taxi would be, you know, the time distance, but you can have flat fees to airport, flat fees to Sexsmith, as long as it's identified and disclosed to the customer. So it doesn't have to specify as an exact amount. There has to be a default, but it, it's pretty common practice that there's different contract rates that are available.
Okay. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Actually, that addressed my, I wondered if it would be possible for the, the post, that information to state something as simple as, you know, for the limousine companies, for example, it could be as simple as the rate as agreed upon at time of booking, something to that effect. But I will support this amendment because it does get at the protection for the client that I really wanted when, when I made the motion to have this brought back. And thank you, Director Manuel, for covering the, the ins and outs of it, but that was my concern was the, the customer actually knowing that they have the right to pay by electronic means in the moment.
Director Manuel?
Sorry. Just in quickly reviewing this, I, I think one way just to make it abundantly clear for people is payments rate, so basically payment, methods, rates and terms, unless pre-arranged. So if, if something was pre-arranged, it doesn't really matter. The customer knows what they're paying before they go, right? It, I think the only time payment becomes a question is when payment concludes at the end of the ride, if it was on a timer basis or a distance basis.
I'll just check with Ms. Karpischewski. Are you good with this?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. As this is Counselor Palat's amending motion, friendly amendment would need to be addressed by a council member.
Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I think the wording that, and I appreciate Director Manuel trying to help me with my wording on it, but I think the wording that you had there with it is, as long as it was predetermined rates, I think would be good. So I, I would be comfortable with the wording you had there. Sorry, I meant to write it down and I missed it. So I would look to Ms. Karpischewski to see if she caught it, or maybe Director Manuel could please repeat it.
Director Manuel, are you, do you have it there? Thank you.
Yeah, I do. So it would be add section 5, sub 1, sub D to read payment methods, rates and terms, unless pre-arranged payment has been made, or, sorry, unless pre-arranged.
Any comments or questions on the amendment? Seeing non-counselor Palat, did you have, did you wish to close? Sorry?
No, that, that's fine, Mayor Clayton.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call to question on the amendment, please. That is carried unanimously. Now, Counselor Bressi, did you mention you may have a possible another amendment?
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you. I might have, I might have two more motions I'm hoping to make, but the first one was, there was talk at committee about, concerned about requiring a branch office within the city of Grand Prairie. I'm wondering if that's something that administration had a chance to look at, if there's any recommendations on amendment for that. I've got an idea too, but I'd like to look at you folks first.
Mr. Hebert?
Yeah, so taking what was said at committee there, just rewording that from branch office within the municipality, or within the city rather, to the Grand Prairie region would be basically that, the simple fix for that section of the bylaw there.
Great. So then with that, I would move that, sorry, I've just got the bylaw. I just had it. I would move that council, the council amend the bylaw, section 21, sub, sub 1, sub C to strike the city and add the Grand Prairie region. And just to speak to this, I think it makes sense saying, hey, you need to have a local business presence so we can find you. I don't think it's, as much as I kinda like to, I don't think it's right to say that has to be within the city of Grand Prairie. It can't be in the hamlet of Claremont if that's where you keep your fleet, or somewhere else that we can still get to you easily, but it's more convenient for you to operate out of. So I hope the council will support this amendment.
Thank you. I had a question for Counselor Bressi. In the Grand Prairie region, did you have parameters for that? Is there primary trading region? Is it a, you know, a specific identified region?
Yeah, it's, I, maybe you'd wanna ask administration how they interpret that, but I know if I was making amendment my own, if I might have said the county of Grand, Grand Prairie were roughly the county's footprint, is kinda what I consider this, but I'm open to whatever reasonable interpretation administration might make.
Director Manuel?
I think the safest approach, and just to specify the communities we would typically encompass within the county, the Wembly's and the Sexsmiths and whatnot, I would say within 100 kilometers of the city. I think that gives you a geographical circle that you can quantify easier than picking off the little towns and stuff.
Counselor Bressi?
For, for me, I am actually fairly comfortable with the administration's original recommendation of just region. I think that I trust them to interpret it reasonably, and if somebody feels that they didn't interpret it reasonably, then there is an appeal recourse, recourse here.
Sure. I guess as someone brought it up the question, my concern would be not to limit it to the county. I mean, the town of Grovedale is within the MD, it's very close. So if we're, if we're comfortable leaving it at the region, then that's fine. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, it's, I seem to get general nods that we're good with leaving it to administration's interpretation. So I will, seeing no further comments or questions on the amendment, call to question, please vote. That motion is carried unanimously. Counselor, I'm just gonna check in case anybody else wanted to get in. Is there anybody else that had something before I go back to Counselor Bressi? Seeing nothing, Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. The last thing I've got that I might make an amendment, I might make a motion coming out of, I might not, but I just wanted to, something I wanted to dig into a little bit more was at committee, I asked if there was a thought of requiring GPS and cameras, cameras in these. And what administration said was that determination was made not to recommend that, 'cause the thought was to leave it to the free market to decide, do consumers want that or not. But I'm kinda curious if, was there any analysis done if council did wanna require cameras or GPS? Was there any analysis done if we'd have the authority to do that, if council thought it would be a good idea?
Counselor, Director Manuel?
The answer is yes, we have the authority to do it. In Alberta, only the city of Calgary and the city of, or I guess Wood Buffalo are the municipalities that do so. In city of Calgary, all the taxi G I, GPS information is actually submitted to the city on every trip in real time, which is something we don't wanna go through. But there is provisions that permit either GPS or security cameras or combined to exist. So it is a possibility. It would be specific at this point to taxis, as because there's clearly application issues with designated drivers and so on.
Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, I'm just looking for your advice, Mayor Clayton. I would like to make a motion to, to, I personally would like to require with, with taxis, but I'm very open to the idea of either directing administration to, if council wants to, wants to go about it anyways, I'm happy to make it a motion that would have the effect of asking administration to go and draft amendments and come back before we finish debating this bylaw. Or I'd also be, I can, I also can support the bylaw as is, and then just make a business arising after third reading, assess those amendments at a later date if council wants. So I'm just kinda looking for your advice, Mayor Clayton, what you'd prefer.
Sure. I'll ask. I mean, I have a thought, but I'll just, I'll see if Director Manuel had a preference. I mean, we could easily table this motion, or this public hearing, sorry. But Director Manuel, did you have something?
So my advice would be this. We've had a number of recommendations that, subsequent motions, that we will incorporate into the bylaw. I think, I, I do have wording prepared that would accomplish this for us, but I do, i- if that's the last amendment that we'd be looking for, I am comfortable tabling this. Our timelines are still good, and in a couple of weeks, we come back and you'll have the changes as we presented them implemented for your final second, third reading of the bylaw.
So if I could suggest, maybe possibly we visit this amendment right now as well, then table the overall public hearing, so that there's a timeframe for public consumption of the numerous amendments, and, and then this would come back at a subsequent council meeting, if that's appropriate. Counselor Bressi, maybe you're just willing to hear Director Manuel's suggestion, or you had something? Counselor Bressi, maybe you're just willing to hear Director Manuel's suggestion or you had something in mind?
Um, I, yeah, sure, yeah, sure. I, yeah, I'm open to your Director Manuel's suggestion if he's already got it drafted.
Okay. And so I was just reminded by our legislative clerk that we're actually not in a public hearing right now. So we just won't have third reading and we'll just come back in two weeks' time. But yeah, Director Manuel?
Certainly. So this is consistent and common between both Calgary and Wood Buffalo. But it would be to add section 11, sub one, sub E to read the vehicle equipped, or sorry, yeah, the vehicle equipped with a fully functional digital video recorder camera of a make and model approved by the chief taxi inspector. And then we would need to add section 11, sub one, sub E, sub I to say chauffeurs and dispatch shall comply with all applicable privacy legislation.
Go ahead, Counselor Bressi, then I have a question from Counselor Palat.
Yeah, I think, well, sorry, why don't you ask, like, Counselor Palat ask his question?
Sure, Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just I'm just curious if we were to go ahead with this. I mean, appreciate it gives more security, which I I would like to have too. But I'm not sure what the cost of this is for the for the groups that we're asking if we have taxis all of a sudden, how to put these in every car, much for the cost. But Director Manuel, my other question is, what do we expect from them as far as storage? And so if I'm understanding FOIP, so these would be great if we had a concern. But if somebody three weeks later come along and said, hey, I had an issue with cab ABC on this night, are we expecting cab companies to have a certain level of backup for a certain time? Like, I'm just, can you explain to me how us, asking us from industry, how we, what that means to them? Like, in camera access is one thing, but are they expected to secure it and have data backup for a period of time? And what what would that period of time be? I guess is my questions.
Director Manuel?
That's a very good point and one of the reasons that administration was reluctant to go down this path. Data is is challenging. So from a hardware perspective, we know that in Wood Buffalo on their approved cameras, the lowest end one started around $300 for the hardware. I mean, the installs are generally pretty simple depending on what you're installing. But additionally, data storage is is the challenging piece because depending on how busy that taxi is and how much space, you know, if you're using high definition video, I can tell you from enforcement services, we burn through a lot of data with our with our cameras and the storage and the archiving of it. We, in this motion, haven't been prescriptive about that. That being said, from an investigative perspective, you need generally at least seven days to give yourself enough runway between when a complaint happens and when you go back looking for that video footage. So it would be prudent to specify that. If we want to specify it, we'll have to come back with a little bit more research and probably consultation because the people in the vehicle for hire industry that are probably least likely to be able to afford significant costs associated to a new bylaw are likely the taxis. They they are probably running on the tightest. They have the greatest expenses and probably not the corresponding revenues to support it.
Counselor Palat and then Counselor Bressi?
So on that, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I, as much as I think that'd be good to safeguard the community, I think the timing is just is not now to be asking industry, especially this taxi industry, that when you drive around a community, you don't see them running around with full cabs all day long, much like our transit. So I I think right now is not the right time to do that. I also think we should be having conversations about what that looks like if we do do it. And I don't, I'd rather us not table the entire program today on it, the policy on it today and the bylaw on it because I think we should be able to move this forward. Great conversation we'd be having a year from now, though. And so I, you know, if there was a motion coming on this that wanted us to have a look at this coming back to a committee in a year from now, I think that would be great. But I think for me, we put more steps in than we had before to safeguard our community. I don't know if this is one at this time that we need to jump into because I don't know if it's going to reach the intent we want without adding a lot of costs to our tax cab industry.
Counselor Bressi?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try a motion here and it's a little bit different than the last few motions we made. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we direct.
Sorry, one second, Counselor Bressi. So I'll just check with our legislative clerk. You have a recommendation that if we were going to change it from Director Manuel, but we don't have an actual amendment currently. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Bressi.
Yeah, so before what the motions were to actually amend the bylaw, this time I'm gonna move that council direct administration to draft potential amendments to require GPS and cameras in a taxi cab. And the intent of this is, it's a little bit more complicated than the last ones. There is issues with data storage, there's things like that. I'd like administration to get a chance to go and think through any things that might come up in debate or already have and be able to thoughtfully present amendments. And the other idea of this is if this motion passes, then we'd be given a suite of amendments that, to speak to what Counselor Palat just said. If council says, yes, this is something that's good, just now is not the right time, given COVID, it would be easy to take a package of amendments that are presented to us and direct administration to bring it back for consideration in six months or a year, whatever council decided. So I think for me, I do want to see those amendments and I I I want to debate them, but I'm not ready to just make a motion to put them in the bylaw as of today. So this isn't a motion to actually amend the bylaw, it's a motion to ask administration to bring forward potential amendments for us to consider.
Thank you for that, Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I won't I won't be able to support the motion. I think ask administration to go look at hypothetical amendments at this point. I don't think it's good use of their time. I think if they were going to consult with industry to to come back and tell me what hard costs are for industry, like we do with every industry, I'd want to hear what they're saying before we send administration away for potential amendments. So I can't support the amendment, unfortunately, Counselor Bressi.
And so I'm gonna ask that Counselor Bressi table your motion till we vote on the amended second reading of the bylaw? Okay, perfect. So the, just so counsel's clear, we're gonna vote on the amended second reading of the bylaw, which I think had three amendments, I'm just reading. But is everybody clear on where we're at and and what we're voting on? And if not, I'll get Ms. Karbushewski to read it. Sure. So Ms. Counselor Minhas has asked that if you could read the the second reading motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The second reading to bylaw C dash 1394 as amended includes the following carried amendments. To amend the bylaw to add section eight, subsection one, subsection D to insert allow for electronic payment. To add section five, subsection one, subsection D to insert payment rates, methods and terms unless prearranged. And to add section 21, subsection one, subsection C to strike the city and insert the Grand Prairie region.
Perfect. So if that's clear for all of council, we'll vote on that amended second reading. Seeing no further comments or questions, I'll call the question, vote. That carries unanimously. Now, Counselor Bressi, I think you have a, you would like to go ahead with your subsequent motion.
Yeah, and yeah, to direct administration to per to draft amendments for the vehicle for hire bylaw that would require GPS and video recording. And just to speak to, just to speak a little bit to it, this isn't a hypothetical amendment for me. This is something that I fully intend to support when it comes to council. It's not a, hey, I want to see and then I might support it. It's, I think we should require these in vehicles for hire. It's a, one of the most common concerns I hear in our community is people feeling unsafe taking our cabs. And I think technology creates a safe, a way for people to feel and be safer that I I do think is affordable. And so I hope council will support this. But the great thing about it coming back with amendment is for me saying, hey, we could give it another six months or 12 months, I don't mean six months, 12 months to consider it. I mean, if we wanted to, we could approve these amendments, but put a timeframe on them so they don't kick in for a period of time if council wants. So we could give industry more than just the time till May 1st to adjust and to recover from COVID. So for me, it's not a hypothetical. I fully think that we should should require these in our vehicles for hire. So I hope that council will support this motion.
Perfect. Thank you, Counselor Bressi. So comments or questions on that piece of business? Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you. I I can't support this motion. I I perhaps it would be a good idea for administration to bring forward a proposal. But I certainly, even at that time, would not be in favor of installing cameras in in these vehicles, partly for the reasons that Counselor Palat has already given. And partly because I think it's it's extremely intrusive for passengers, far more intrusive for the varo, the volume of passengers than than the risks that it would mitigate. I think that they would be very small in the first place. So I'm I'm not a, not in favor.
All right, Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this either. I've been in cabs from one end of the country to the other. And I've asked this question, do you own this cab or is it a corporate cab? And the ones that have the cameras and GPS are more or less a corporate decision to have them installed in there. And if they wanted to run a cab, then they were forced into it by the corporation, not the city or the municipality. And I don't real feel or feel really right on burdening industry right now that's a little weak and giving them a bill to have this installed. And then there's the cost of of maintaining the storage. There was a number of companies that I did talk to over the years that when the car is stopped, the bill is paid, it automatically goes downloaded right into the main terminal and there's no information left in the car itself. And I'm not in favor of putting this in unless the cab companies want to. And maybe we can give them an incentive, but I'm not making them do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Toole. I think I saw Counselor Minhas. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I like, I think it's all been said in the cabinet, Clyde. But you know, it's a lots independent operator, it'll be very heavy. Cost should do that because I know the GP system costs and stuff because we've been doing it. And for the company, if it's big company, that's okay, they can bear the cost. But Grand Prairie, I don't think it's fine, we can do that for now. And especially this corporate situation like we said earlier, you know, like we can wait and do it later on in next year. But this time is I'm not, I can't support this motion because it's not wise to put a lot more. We already done three other things and that will cost extra too, you know, doing the whole thing. And then put it back into the independent operator, they pay the tax income and they pay the daily thing. Yeah, then otherwise the customer is going to pay more price for it. So I'm not sure.
So I have a question for Director Manuel before I go to Counselor Thiessen. Director Manuel, I I appreciate Counselor Bressi's concerns. And I mean, first and foremost, in my opinion, safety needs to be considered here. I know that from many people in our community, especially women, that they're not comfortable catching cat taxis in our community. It is a concern with safety. Is there anything in your opinion, Director Manuel, that addresses or enhances any aspect of safety with this with this new bylaw?
Bylaw as a whole?
Yeah.
Or this?
Because I don't see anything in the bylaw that addresses any concerns in the community that we're hearing in regards to safety in taxis. And this emotion as on the floor right now absolutely is is the thing that addresses safety for the rider, not for the, you know, not for additional vehicles on the road, not for the vehicle safety, but for the for the rider's safety, this is the one item that, in my opinion, addresses safety. Do I agree that there's, it's very cost prohibitive? It could be, it could limit some organizations from being able to operate. Absolutely appreciate that. But I know there's, I've heard numerous times over the years that women specifically just won't get into taxis alone.
That's, so, no, there's no significant change to the bylaw that I'm aware of. Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, that addresses the physical some of the physical safety, I guess, mitigations. That being said, one thing that you should note is this bylaw is broader than taxis, right? And what we're talking about is making a requirement specific to taxis. Doesn't mean that an Uber driver, if we had Uber, would have a camera in their vehicle because Ubers don't have cameras in their vehicles by mandate. A driver may put one in himself. A designated driver who's driving your personal vehicle, you know, again, we don't really have a a means to have a camera placed in your personal vehicle while they're driving you. Does it not mean that we have similar concerns raised on occasion about those industries as well? We do. So, but the case can certainly be made. I would not be one to argue that cameras and GPS have have use and are beneficial in investigations and potentially mitigating some circumstances. So it is really just a balance. And there has been companies, there is companies in Grand Prairie that operate GPS and cameras in their taxis.
Yeah, thank you. And just, you know, in in regards to driver for hire type services, I mean, we, in Uber, I feel that they mitigate that risk with the way that their platform is served. I mean, you can't be hailing over an Uber driver and getting in a vehicle. Their their platform has safety mechanisms in it for the rider based on how, you know, you have to schedule a pickup, et cetera. That situation doesn't happen happen in taxis. So it, you know, I I don't feel that there's as much of an opportunity there. But I know Counselor Thiessen had a question.
There we go. Sorry, I have the request to speak for working with the new system here. Actually, no, I was going to say the same thing that you did here, Worship. My biggest concern with the taxi industry or the the driver for hire industry is the safety that is placed upon women. And those are the largest complaints that I've gotten over the years and they don't seem to be going away. And we've tried other things, displaying the driver in the backseat, having a larger placard so that you can make out that the driver is actually the driver that's driving you. But those complaints keep, still keep coming up. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a knock on the taxi industry. I think they want to protect themselves as well. They definitely don't want to have a driver who is reportedly assaulting or asking favors of vulnerable women who are getting in their cab late at night when they're drunk. I've heard stories driving out into the county saying, you pay me double or I don't take or I drop you off here. These are scary stories for for women and and people who are feel a bit vulnerable, especially when they're alone. And sometimes this has happened when there's been more than one female in the vehicle at the same time. So I I actually like this motion. I'd probably go even further and try to challenge Uber's own laws on on stuff and say, well, you know, this is what how we do it in the city of Grand Prairie because we want to make sure that all of our citizens are safe. So I will be supporting this motion put forward by Counselor Bressi. And I look forward to what kind of thoughts administration puts forward and if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thiessen. I have Director Manuel and then Counselor Palat.
I I did see that Mr. Haber was trying to get in before he, so he may have some some further information around some of the changes within the bylaw. One of the things in regard to complaints is it goes back to Counselor Bressi's point around public education. So, you know, antedoteally, I've I've heard different things over the years as well. But I can say in over 10 years at enforcement services, I'm aware of maybe off the top of my head, two investigations in 10 years regarding driver conduct being inappropriate with their, and and that's both through the RCMP and enforcement services. So if it's happening, which it may be, there needs to be more reporting. So we have a lot of tools to address drivers and, you know, we'll want to do that in conjunction with whatever else we do, that public education piece as well.
Thank you for that. Counselor Palat?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just just want to reiterate, I guess, for me, without knowing the costs and the potential the costs and the potential impacts of industry, I just, I can't support it. The other thing I want to point out, too, is, you know, let's give industry an opportunity here. If there's really a major safety factor out there, and there was some kind of positioning that one cab company could have over the other cab company, you would think they'd be doing it. And so I guess for me, if there's as much concerns about people not getting in cabs because they're not safe, I'm shocked that one of the current cab companies hasn't rectified that and put cameras in their cars if they really thought that was a big step in it. So I guess without more data on it and knowing what it's going to cost them, I just can't support it. Appreciate the attempt, just can't support it.
Mr. Hibbert?
Thank you. If I just may chime in, just to remind council that the proposed bylaw does increase the criminal record check for people that have been convicted from five years to 10. That's double what we currently have in place. That includes the vulnerable sector check, which covers part in sexual offenses and all criminal code matters. So just keep that in consideration for that we are essentially, if this goes forward as proposed, it will double that screening, whereas we have allowed people to get a chauffeur's permit and operate in the city with criminal records that, you know, all their criminal records, but just keep that in consideration.
Thank you. A question for Director Manuel, if you don't see anyone else in the queue. If this motion was successful, you would bring back for further discussion. Through that, would you have consultation with industry, or what would your plan be in regards to bringing this back for further discussion?
So certainly, yes, we would want to consult industry about this particular change. We would just have to be cognizant of our timelines with the current legislation expiring, but we should be able to achieve that.
Thank you for that. So based on that, I will support this motion. I think that this is a due diligence piece. I think that for us to consult with industry and look at opportunities to increase safety is always a win. If it comes back to council and is defeated because industry finds it's too cost prohibitive, or through the legislation, it's not something that is possible, or the industry truly believes that this won't work for them, and we don't see a big win out of it, then at that time, council can defeat it. But for now, I will support this motion because I do want to see what the possibility is of creating additional safety in these ride-for-hire hires and taxis. Anyone else? Counselor Bressi to close.
Great. Thank you. Just before I close, if council permitted a friendly amendment, I think I misspoke in the motion. I was hoping to make this specific to taxis, and that's not captured in the motion as it is. So I'm hoping that council will put that friendly amendment. And just to close, speak to a few things that I've heard is absolutely, I think it's good to have, let industry have their say about what impact does it have on them. And that's why I'm not trying to amend the bylaw today. I'm asking for amendments to be brought back to a further meeting. So this can be given due consultation and due consideration. I think one of the issues with taxis is often you don't have a choice of what cab you want to take. When you're the last person off the plane at the airport, and there's one cab left, and you take that cab if it's one in the morning. Or when you're out at a bar, and you need a safe drive, safe drive home, and for whatever reason, designated driving service won't work, you call the cab company usually, that the bar calls for you. So I don't know if there is, I don't think for me, it's enough to say, hey, if the market demands this, the market will do this. I don't think there's enough choice in consumers to rely on that. The other thing I'd say is, I'm sure that everybody on council has heard the stories going around our community, and I appreciate hearing that there haven't been too many formal complaints. But I'd also point out that we know that sexual assaults are usually not reported. And one of the biggest reasons that victims say they don't report sexual assaults is because they fear that nobody will believe them. While if they knew that there was GPS and a camera there, all of a sudden, that's one big fear that would be significantly mitigated. And I hope that this would prevent all of that from happening, period. But in the unfortunate circumstances where something inappropriate did happen to a vulnerable person in a cab, this would give them more security to report it, so we can make sure that more vulnerable people aren't hurt in the future. So I think that this is something that would be well received by our community, would make our taxis safer, it would also just make them feel safer. So I hope that council will support this, so we can give this due consideration when administration brings it forward.
All right, that was a close. So with that, I will call the question, please vote on the sorry, on the motion as stated. That motion is defeated with a vote of four to four. So now, Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to try, I'm going to try a lesser motion that hopefully I can swing one of my colleagues with it. And that was, I would move the council direct administration to draft amendments to bylaw C-1394 to require the use of GPS by taxis and bring back to a future committee meeting. So this is saying, hey, you need to have a GPS, taking out that idea of you need to record cameras. I know that the big concerns I heard were cost, storage, and privacy. I think all those are significantly mitigated if you're just tracking where a taxi is. It's not going to be as expensive. Story GPS locations is fairly cheap, especially compared to video. And there's a lot less privacy concerns with the passenger if it's just the locations of the trip are logged, but there's nothing about what state they may have been in, or what they looked like, or what they said in the cab is in store. So I think it allays a lot of those privacy concerns, too. I also think that this can have, one of the stories that goes around is driven to a place that they shouldn't have been driven at and extorted. And having that GPS location would mitigate that. It would also allow us to know which driver was driving what passenger, if they didn't record the name or the thing. So I think GPS does provide a measure of safety to passengers, but with significantly less costs and with significantly less privacy concerns. So I hope that one of you will swing with this lesser motion.
So that motion is in order. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Can I just ask administration how that would work? I appreciate GPS. So I get in a cab, I get home, I decided I wasn't happy. Do I call the city? Do I call the, can you just walk me through how this GPS actually changes anything for rider's safety, other than, yes, if you thought you were ripped off, you could say my route wasn't the right route? I'm just, I'm still struggling with this, to be honest, because it doesn't, it's not a free cost to administration. There's going to be an administrative cost for every business that runs a cab to look after this, keep it stored, keep it accessible. So it's not like this is just a, hey, administration can do this for free in these cab companies. So I want to be cognizant that there's going to be a cost this one way or another, consumers. I'm just not sold enough administration can tell me how GPS is going to help my wife getting in a cab and getting home later that night, how she was safer from the experience, I guess. I'm just curious if you can answer that.
Director Manuel?
Certainly. So I guess from an investigative perspective, what the GPS would be used to do is, so one, the legislation would have to specify that the GPS data must be backed up somewhere and retainable for a certain period of time. And within that period of time, if a complaint was received, and, for instance, chauffeurs, taxi cab chauffeurs, they keep like point A to point B records, like I picked up client here, and I dropped them off there. And if an allegation was made that, you know, somebody detoured and went out of the community, I suppose the GPS could be used by the police or enforcement to verify the complainant's allegation as to where they went. And it certainly doesn't tell you what happened, but it could tell you whether there was inconsistencies with the routes. But that would probably be the extent of it.
So thanks for that, Director Manuel. Hearing that, I just, I think, again, this is another, it might make few people feel better, but there's going to be a cost, an operational cost to industry, and I don't think it's going to achieve what you're hoping it'll achieve. So I won't be supporting this one either.
Further comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, call the question. Please vote. Counsel Friesen is your vote registering. There we go. Thank you. That motion is defeated with a four-four. All right, seeing no other business arising. Oh, Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. Mayor Clayton, I voted incorrectly.
All right. So we'll clear the votes and vote that again, please. Please vote. And that motion is carried with a vote of five to three. So that will leave this bylaw coming back to a subsequent council meeting. I'm just going to check with Legislative Services. Based on that, should we be having the vote, we're good on this bylaw, and we'll move to the next two? Is that correct? Sure. I mean, we'll consider having third reading. However, there is a motion on the floor that could very well change this bylaw. So I guess if council would like to defeat the opportunity for having third reading, that would be suggested, in my opinion. But I'll look for, I think it's Counselor Palat that started this, so I'll go to Counselor Palat for the next piece of business.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So I would just make a motion that council have third reading for this bylaw.
Great. So with that, there's no debate on the merits of having third reading here tonight. And actually, sorry, I apologize. There is debate opportunity on the merits of having third reading tonight. I will see if anyone has comments or questions on that. Seeing none, I'll ask, please vote. And having third read is defeated, five to three. So we will not have third reading here tonight. That this bylaw will come back to a subsequent council meeting. And now we'll move on to the next piece of business, which is bylaw C-1395E to amend the fees, rates, and charges bylaw. Counselor Palat?
Sorry. Maybe get an e-scribe trading. I don't know how to get my other screen back on here, so I can't see the motions. Is it? Oh, sorry. Sorry, my apologies. So I'd make a motion that, sorry, I'm just trying to get to the back of the screen. The council give first reading to bylaw C-1395E being amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw.
So I'll ask if there's any, there's no comments or questions on this, and then, but I just wanted to see before we moved on to that, if there's any comments from administration in regards to this amendment. I see no one turning their camera on, so I'm going to, oh, Mr. Hibbert, did you have any introduction or any information that was in regards to this amendment that was relevant or necessary for discussion?
Oh, sorry. No, I was just turning on my camera, just in case anybody had questions for me.
Perfect. I see. Oh, Counselor Blackburn?
Sorry, Mayor Clayton, but I think on first reading, there's no debate, and we could probably have first reading and then figure out the complications after.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you, then. Call the question, please vote on having first reading. That is carried unanimously. All right. So now we'll move on to second reading. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw C-1395E, an amendment to the fees and rates and charges bylaw.
Perfect. And now's the time for comments or questions for administration. Seeing none, I'll call the question, having second reading of bylaw C-1395E. That is carried unanimously. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would make a motion that council have third reading of bylaw C-1395E at this meeting.
So this would be a motion to give third reading. So here tonight with this amendment, comments or questions, concerns on the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing none, call the question, please vote. That's carried unanimously. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So I'd make a motion that council give third reading to bylaw C-1395E, being amendment to the fees, rates, and charges bylaw.
Perfect. Seeing no comments or questions, concerns, please vote. Call the question, please vote. That's carried unanimously. And one more item of business, policy 804. Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council approve amendments to policy 804, being a vehicle for hire license and permitting policy.
That motion's in order. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, call to question, please vote. And that is carried unanimously. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was happy to support that because the policy is outdated and doesn't work, and we need a policy for now because we don't have a vehicle for hire bylaw in place. That being said, I don't see the need for it once we've passed a vehicle for hire bylaw. So I'd like to move the council direct administration to bring this policy forward for potential appeal alongside third reading of the vehicle for hire bylaw.
And that motion is in order. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, I call the question. Sorry, one second. Counselor Bressi, could you read your motion one more time?
That, to direct administration to bring forward this policy for potential appeal alongside third reading of the vehicle for hire bylaw. So my intention is, I'm very open to friendly amendments for wording, but my intention is, once we've passed, once we've passed the vehicle for hire bylaw, I'd like us to have a vote on whether or not we're going to repeal this policy.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, call the question, please vote. That's carried unanimously. And I think that is everything regarding vehicle for hire bylaw. I see nothing further, no business arising, anything in addition. So Counselor Palat, any other additional meeting highlights?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, we had quite a bit of chat about the vehicle for hire at committee as well, but we did also have some Q4 updates. We had Community Social Development give their 2024 Q4, as well as Enforcement Services, the Fire Department, and RCMP. So I'd, anybody that is watching that wants to, I would go back into our previous council meetings, all the documentations there, I won't go through all the data. I will give a couple updates, though, through the RCMP, a 27% decrease in criminal code, 10% decrease in persons in crime, and 32% decrease in property crime happened between Q4 of 2019 and Q4 2020. So some trends that were going in the right direction.
Thank you for that update. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to correspondence. In your package, there's two items of correspondence. The first one being a letter from the Grand Prairie Public Library. It's in your package. It came to myself and council, and it's really just a thank you regarding the budget and the stable predictable funding for the library going forward. And that, you know, they are experiencing, right now, as we all know, in the COVID phase two, libraries are opening, they are having people back in their space, which is great. It shows data there in regards to the active use of what their expectations are in regarding the library in the future. So it was just for a piece of information that I wanted to share with council. So if somebody would be so kind to make a motion to receive that, unless there's unless there's further business from it, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council accept both correspondence for information.
Perfect, thank you. And yeah, the second piece that wasn't identified there is from Minister of Municipal Affairs, and it's just simply regarding the legislation and the information that came from budget 2021. So that motion is in order. I'll call the motion, please vote.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Clayton.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Bressi.
Sorry, I did have a couple of questions for administration about the letter from the minister, if I may.
Sure, perfect, go ahead.
And just counsel knows, because they're kind of specific questions, I did give them a heads up that I'd be asking these. But the thing that I want to hone in on is the letter talks about the total amount given to municipalities for MSI, for municipal infrastructure funding. I'm just curious if administration could tell me, how does the average infrastructure funding in the course of this budget, so for the three years of MSI remaining in this budget, how does that compare to what we were expecting over that same time period from last year's provincial budget?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Counselor Bressi, to answer your question, when we first planned our budget based on last year's provincial budget, we were anticipating 11 million as an average over those three years, so 2021, 22, and 23. And now, based on the new provincial budget that's just been released... Sorry, I've got that backwards. We were anticipating 11.9, that's dropped now to an average of 11. So we saw a decrease of 900,000 on the average funding from last year's provincial budget.
Great, and then one other question is, how does the funding, how does the average of the funding in those three years compare to the funding, to the average of the funding we've received over the last 10 years of the MSI program?
Ms. Whiteway.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So when we look back on 10 years of MSI funding, the average that we received was around 13.6 million. So 13.6 is the average, now we're looking at an average of 11 million.
Great, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate it. Just when the ministers talk about infrastructure funding, I think it is just worth highlighting that there is a reduction to municipalities, both over what we've received historically and what we're told we'd received last year. And maybe that's okay, I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing. I understand the fiscal, the fiscal condition of the province, but I do think it is important to highlight that that will have an impact on either our property tax rates or how many roads and storm sewers we can repair or other municipal services. So happy to receive this for information, but I think it is important to highlight the impact this is going to have on us as a municipality going forward.
Great. Seeing no further comments or questions, the motion is to receive both the letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and the Grand Prairie Public Library for information. Seeing none, I'll call, please vote, call the motion. And that is carried unanimously. Moving on to delegation business, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve funding of $20,000 to the Community Foundation of Northwest Alberta for their Vital Signs project.
So that motion is in order. Comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, I will call, call the motion, please vote. That motion is carried. And yes, thank you for our delegation, the Community Foundation, for attending tonight. There is no notices of motion. And I see Ms... Oh, there we go, we're good. So seeing nothing further, we will now be recessed until 6:00 PM. We'll see you back here shortly.
That's funny. That's true. Okay. Do we know who's on there besides? Okay, we're gonna get going here. All right. Five, four, three, two, one. Good evening and welcome back to the evening delegation, uh, evening portion of our city council meeting. Uh, under scheduled delegations, I have the youth advisory council. I'm just gonna open your document. So if you're with the youth advisory council, if you want to turn on your camera and introduce yourself, that would be appreciated. I see Ms. Nicholson, Atkins, there we go, a few of you. So if you, whoever she may spokesperson, if you want to introduce yourself and your colleagues, that would be appreciated.
Uh, thank you so much for having us here this evening. Um, my name is Kieran Nicholson and I sit as the chair on the Grand Prairie Youth Advisory Council.
Um, my name is Avery Atkins and I sit as a member on the Youth Advisory Council. And that's the two of us here, and we're here to present, um, the work plan for the 2021 year. So in the first quarter of the council session, we are focused on community and organizational engagement. To do so, our members are a part of committees and boards within the city.
Those include the opioid task force, where we advise the youth outlook and perspective on content produced to destigmatize opioids, and the youth hub steering house, which is sponsored by the Sunrise House, where they're working to provide accessible resources for youth.
On top of this, we have seats on some city committees. We have given input on how to reach youth with the Swan Haven project, which is part of planning and development. We also sit on the CKC advisory committee to give feedback on social and sporting events happening in the center, as well as the local immigration partnership, where we provide youth insight on their priorities, which include working with community agencies that support immigrants and newcomers to our community. Uh, we share updates from these committees at each of our meetings and discuss feedback as a council that the representatives then take back to the committees and boards. It is important that we sit on all of these committees so that we remain actively involved with the city and their outreach, our outreach, right?
The Grand Prairie Youth Advisory Council has also been gaining understanding of governance and civic leadership. There's a huge opportunity for growth and learning in the council setting.
Uh, our members take these leadership roles on the council and are given the opportunity in our subcommittees as well. The Y C follows structure in each meeting to learn governance. We also review the city council agenda and meeting minutes each month to identify projects we might, and initiatives we might need to work on that will benefit from the youth perspective.
These actions taken by our council highlight the active role that we play in the, in the city and that us youth have the capabilities to be the leaders of tomorrow.
It has also been very important for us to develop our brand. Our purpose is to be the voice for the youth of our city and therefore we need to be easily accessible to them.
We work with marketing and communications to establish this branding. And have developed a subcommittee dedicated to organizing and creating social media posts, um, across multiple platforms. Our second quarter takes a larger focus on youth and community engagement. So youth recabin during the first week of May every year.
And during then we plan on finding an inspirational speaker to speak to you and our social media team will also be creating multiple posts to get the largest reach possible.
During this week, we would also host an outdoor event, which will be partner partnering with other youth serving agencies. So that youth can come out and find out what support and services are available in the community. Our annual youth engagement awards will highlight businesses, employers, community agencies, and schools that have worked to create a more positive environment for the youth in Grand Prairie.
In the third quarter, the Y C plans to take advantage of the election season and to engage Merrill and council candidates in a public forum to address youth priorities. We would open the discussion to all the youth in the community.
This would hopefully include a partnership with other youth organizations in the city and it would be partially devoted to presenting the importance of the youth's voice.
As this year's council comes to an end, we plan on meeting with the city leadership and council representatives to complete a SWOAT for the 2020 to 2021 year. We believe that that is the best way to end our year and help new members prepare for the next year.
So that concludes the end of our presentation and we are open to any questions the council may have for us.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I see councillor Friesen first.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you very much. What an excellent presentation. That was exciting to hear the direction that our youth council is taking now. My question is, what, uh, is, is this what you expected of youth council and how are you feeling about it? Um, what are some other things that, um, perhaps you'd like to see of youth council or are you still just really enjoying where you're at?
Uh, I think we definitely want to continue moving forward. From when I started, I didn't expect this to happen, but I'm so glad that it did because we're at a such a better state with this city right now, I find. Like I really like that we have more influence in what we're doing and to help youth get a better voice out there. I, the direction we've taken this year, I quite like, but of course in our future years, if you could get even more influence in the city, I, by all means, that's what I'd like to do.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, councillor Teason.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, thanks for being here today, Karen and Avery. Uh, I really appreciate you and the work that you're doing on youth council as well as uh, the role that you've played on our education and awareness subcommittee with the opioid task force. I think you're really helping us, uh, develop a strategy and a plan that will engage youth and hopefully prevent anybody else from slipping into, into these types of addictions. Uh, something you mentioned that actually raised my eyebrow, got me kind of curious, uh, was, uh, your Swan Haven project. I was wondering if you might be able to tell us a little bit more about that.
All right. So with the Swan Haven project, they actually approached us last year. Their project has been put on hold because of, uh, COVID and everything, so they can't go much farther. But they were looking on input on how to actually get the youth involved in the decision making for what's going on there. So we actually suggested, uh, a change to the surveys they were giving out to give us a specific youth, um, spot in it so that we're making sure that the teenagers, youth, young adults that live there are getting the same priority to answer these questions because it's their neighborhood as well. And we'd love to help them again once their project gets back up and running, but currently that is not happening.
Okay. Well, I look forward to, to that going and, uh, you guys making a difference in a community that's longstanding, has lots of good stuff for youth and to end the community at large. So thank you so much.
Thanks councillor Teason. Councillor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, thanks, uh, really, uh, Karen and Avery. My question when you mentioned about the youth newcomers, like immigrants, how you guys have any programs set up or how do you guys help the kind of thing?
So, uh, me and Avery don't sit on that committee, but, uh, Diana is the one who sits on the committee in here and I believe she's attending this meeting today. Perhaps she would like to answer that question for us?
Sorry, yeah, can you just repeat your question?
Yeah, like the new youth, uh, immigrants come to Grand Prairie and I know there are lots of students came in last few years. How does the youth supported their, our discommunication, working with them?
Um, so we don't actually have very many answers right now. Uh, the youth perspective that we want youth advisory council to provide is based on, uh, the priorities. So right now, uh, the Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership has their survey out in the community. Um, and so based on that data, we'll be collecting the priorities and then we'll be taking the priorities back to youth advisory council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. I had one question. Is there any, um, areas of the community that city council currently works on? Or topics of consideration that you wish the youth council would be invited to, to be part of the conversation? Is there things that you think we're missing in regards to where we could include you and, and things that you, you know, you would love to put your hand up for to be part of the conversation?
So at our meetings, we always go over Grand Prairie City engaged to kind of look over some of those items. There are some that we are interested in right now, um, that we talk about at the meetings, I'm sorry. But we, I don't think we've discussed any as a council that we would particularly like. Did you have anything, Avery?
Um, I missed the last meeting, um, but there's just like, if something comes up, then everyone on the youth advisory council will definitely like want to look at it, but I don't think that at the moment there's something that we really think we need to be a part of. I mean, everything would be great to have a voice on, but.
And, and do you make a point of sending, uh, somebody or letting youth know in your area when we are having open houses? For example, did you have any youth representation at our consultation regarding the downtown construction or, um, Avondale one? Uh, there was an Avondale Public House, uh, recently. Uh, so do you sort of keep up on those notices and try to send or to make youth in that area, uh, aware of those?
Uh, the Avondale one specifically, we did send to our group chat, but I do think that that's some advice we could take into the future to try and share those things we're finding across our social media platforms. Currently, we're trying to build them up, but, uh, I'm actually gonna take that as an idea to share those on our platforms as well because we have, I think that that would be a good idea to do some more.
Perfect. That's great. Any further comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, I, I thank you so much for coming tonight. Uh, it's great to get an update and, uh, keep, uh, going with the great work you're doing. The more consultation we can have with youth, the better. So we truly appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much for having us here. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Uh, I'm unaware of any other delegations. Nope, that's good. So we'll move to unfinished business, borrowing bylaw. C dash one, four, three, zero, uh, being a by, borrowing bylaw. Councillor Minhas.
I moved, oh man. I moved the council, council gave the second reading to the bylaws, C dash fourteen thirty.
Okay, that motion is in order.
Yeah.
Are you good councillor Minhas, sorry?
Are we gonna do both together or just one?
No, separately.
No, yes.
Comments or questions on the motion? Councillor Bressi.
Hey, Mayor Clayton. I just think it's worth, uh, worth acknowledging, members in the community that have reached out to me suggesting we shouldn't support this because they don't support the downtown rehabilitation project. And I just think it's really important to highlight that this really isn't a decision point council is making. Council back in 2019 decided to move forward with the downtown rehabilitation and there's been well over a year of work. Contracts are signed. This is happening no matter what. This really is just municipal government act. Legal technicality that we have to carry out to enact the decision that council already made. So it's not a referendum on the project. That's our, that ship's already sailed. So whatever council members feel about downtown rehabilitation, however, we voted in the past. This is something that should be passed unanimously, in my opinion. So I hope that everybody will support it.
Thank you councillor Bressi. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Um, yeah, I agree a hundred percent wholeheartedly. As somebody who didn't vote for the first three phases of the downtown, we had a pretty comprehensive look at, uh, the road structure, the road base. And the costs that are associated with it that inevitably would have been throwaway costs with an increase in the cost of materials in the future if we were going to just replace the road. Um, I think it's, it's better at this point. Uh, there's money that was gonna go into the project anyways. And for people who don't understand that, I just want to make that abundantly clear that it was still gonna cost us money. This is just a way of doing it and, uh, uh, the way that we're doing it actually pays for itself in a sense, uh, because of the shares that we gain from Alcotera. Uh, it will pay off the borrowing bylaw. So it means no increase to taxes for the extra cost of the road and stuff like that. It's a project that pays for itself. So like councillor Bressi said, I hope everyone unanimously supports this.
Uh, further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. Please vote. That's carried unanimously. Councillor Minhas.
I moved the council gave the third reading to bylaw, C dash fourteen thirty being a borrow, borrowing bylaw.
Perfect, thanks. Last chance for comments, questions on the borrowing bylaw, C dash one, four, three, zero. Seeing none, call the question, please vote. That too carries unanimously.
Oh, good.
Next, under unfinished business, uh, the 2021 B I A budget review. So the business improvement area, which is the downtown, uh, we're looking for a motion to approve their budget. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that we approve the 2021 business, uh, improvement area, uh, budget.
Thank you for that. Comments or questions on the motion? Councillor Teason, did you have any highlights in regards to this? Okay, we are good on that. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that is passed unanimously. Next up, uh, we will move to public hearings. Let's go to get this over in here. I have a call to order the public hearing of the Kensington outline plan. By, uh, bylaw C one, three, four, four, C, an amendment to the outline plan, as well as bylaw C twelve, sixty, dash one, three, four, an amendment to the land use bylaw. Introduction, um, for administrat, from administration, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just confirming you can see my screen there?
Yes, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm here to present bylaw C thirteen forty-four, C and bylaw C twelve, sixty, one, thirty-four. Those are amendments to the Kensington outline plan and land use bylaw. The subject area is in, the Kensington outline plan area is west of one sixteenth street and south of the, uh, railroad line, uh, approximately along the eighty-fourth avenue alignment. I've highlighted the subject area in yellow here. The existing white lots shows the subdivision activity to date. This is an outline of the area that's the proposed rezoning. The amendment to the outline plan is simply to accommodate the rezoning, so I'm presenting them as, as one subject. Um, the area outlined in yellow is currently zoned R G general residential. The proposed amendment is to take it from R G general residential to a mix of combined density residential, which I will refer to as R C, as well as an area to rezone from R G to a new direct control district, which I'll refer to as D C. To touch on the area that is going, the proposal is to change to R C first. I thought I'd provide some examples of development that is currently accommodated under the R C land use district. So in this particular example, I'm sure everyone's familiar with this area. This is in the Pinnacle Ridge neighborhood. It's of a multi-attached unit, uh, four units, I believe. Another example in the Pinnacle neighborhood, further west of the previous slide. This is across the street from this one. This is another multi-attached development. And this is semi-detached. So the R C district accommodates a lot of different forms of multi-attached and the most intense is a small apartment building. But given the configuration of the area under tonight's rezoning, you would not see an apartment building. It would more likely be either, uh, multi-attached, so row housing or semi-detached, like the picture shown here. The area that's subject of the rezoning tonight would not be serviced by a lane, so there would be front driveways as shown in this picture here. Uh, the previous two slides are developments that are serviced by a lane. So just, just clarify that. And another example of an R C district in the cobblestone area. The area that's proposed to be rezoned to direct control is highlighted in yellow on this slide. The primary purpose of the D C district is that it proposes a narrow lot residential district that's narrower than our current narrowest lot land use district. And the D C district introduces, uh, some strategic regulations and design implementation to try and mitigate some of the historical concerns of narrow lot development, which I'll discuss in this presentation. So just a brief history of lot widths is, uh, shown on the table here. Um, the two thousand to three to two thousand thirteen land use district had a minimum lot width of ten point four with no lane and nine point one with a lane. Uh, and then it was increased by approximately two feet, uh, for no lane. Um, and, uh, just trying to do the math in my head, approximately one point three meters for the, uh, width lane. The proposed D C district is going back to the two thousand and three and to two thousand and thirteen, uh, lot widths. So it is something that the city has seen before. So I'll, I'll go through this later, but there are historically some concerns of narrow lot land use district. However, there are a lot of benefits of narrow lot development. It diversifies the housing stock. There's affordable housing options. It provides for a compact urban form, which reduces urban sprawl, and it can be done well. But to get back to some of the concerns, um, some, some of the concerns focus on lack of on-street parking and I'll explain that. This is just a, an aerial photo of, of, uh, residential district. Now, this area is not necessarily the same lot width, but it just demonstrates the point that I'm gonna try and explain here. You have the area, it's obviously a mixture of driveways and then just non-driveway frontage. I've highlighted some areas in red where there is some on-street parking and on-street parking is available pretty much anywhere where there isn't a driveway. And there's some instances where vehicles are parked here and the space in between the driveways isn't that big. So, um, again, this isn't exactly the land use district that you might see if, uh, the amendments are passed tonight. But it demonstrates how with the driveways and the lack of frontage that it can create some parking challenges. And admittedly, just by looking from the air photos here, it looks like these are big trucks. Certainly the average length of a vehicle is shorter than those big trucks, but there are a lot of big trucks in town. So, um, with, uh, historically land use or narrow lot development, um, with driveways on both sides, we've noticed those challenges. And one of the ways to mitigate that, that issue is to have And one of the ways to mitigate that issue is to have the lots on the other side of the street serviced by a lane. Now, what happens in that instance is on the south side of the picture here, you can see that there's three parking stalls available in between driveways. But on the north side, it's all parking because there are no driveways to break up the frontage. In the subject area of tonight's proposed rezoning, I've highlighted the areas where there is driveways to access the road in blue. And you can see over here on this side, there is a lane that goes through the middle of the island. So in that scenario, in the area that's circled, you're going to see this type of scenario where there's unlimited acts or parking opportunities on one side of the street. This area, there are gonna be driveways on both sides of the street, so there will be challenges for on-street parking. Like I had shown in that initial airport. There's some concerns with snow clearing, and that's very much tied to the driveway situation in that there's nowhere to push the snow if it's if there's a lot of driveways, or it's limited area to push the snow. So in areas where there's a lot of driveways and not a lot of frontage, snow clearing operations are just a lot more complicated and more time intensive. And that's just a reality that you can't design around. Historically, there have been some concerns about poor aesthetics in these areas. This is a bit of a subjective matter, so I'm not gonna dwell on it. Everyone has a different opinion on it, but some of the poor aesthetics concerns are tied with the lack of green space, so it's kind of just a, kind of a, they're overlapping issues, if you will. And again, nowhere little landscaping, wide driveways. Now, in the proposed DC district, there is some, some regulations requiring landscaping, planting of one tree for every lot, which is currently something we don't have. And since the previous RS district that we saw developed with these same lot widths, we have introduced driveway width regulations. So some of these concerns have certainly been mitigated by changes we've made over time. Reliferation of secondary suites, same thing, we've introduced new regulations over time, so those concerns may be mitigated or entirely eliminated. Or application of lanes. In this particular case, the lane is very appropriately designed, it's short, it's relatively straight, it's more likely to be used. Historically, we've had some lanes that we've learned lessons where people will not use them if they're too long, or they're they're not straight or whatnot. And there have been some, oh, yeah, so I'm just showing that right there, that's the lane. And there are some RV storage issue concerns historically, but since the time of the previous RS district, the RV storage regulations have been moved out of the land use bylaw and to the traffic bylaw, which allows for quicker enforcement. So the risk of the adopting the proposed amendments is the lack of on-street parking, which I've explained, as well as the snow clearing challenges. Aside from that, we feel that this is a very reasonable proposal. And again, the regulations in the DC district have been included to try and mitigate any concerns, and the practices that the city has implemented may alleviate the other ones. Public consultation, we sent letters to adjacent landowners and advertised in the newspaper, and at the time of presenting, we haven't heard back from anyone that was notified. So it's our recommendation that you give all three readings to the two bylaws presented, and I'm open to any questions, comments, or discussions.
Great, thanks, Mr. Johnson. Comments or questions for administration? Counselor Bresky?
Thank you. I'm just curious in terms of the current subdivision and and building, is is there anybody that's already bought a house in this district?
Mr. Johnson?
Not in the neighborhood as a whole, but in the area that on the streets would actually be subject to changes.
When the area that's subject to changes is not currently subdivided, so there is no possibility for anybody to own a lot in that area. Immediately south of the proposed area, I believe that there are some lots that have, we've issued development permits for houses.
Great, thank you. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, and I'm not sure whether this question is directed better at Mr. Johnson or to people who may be here to support the proposal, but I'll ask. The report says that the bylaw and land use, sorry, that these changes are driven by request from the landowner, who I presume is also the developer. Do we know what demand there is out there for this type of housing rather than just regular residential in this area?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. No, I don't know, but as you noted, I believe the consultant for the applicant will be able to speak to that.
Okay, thanks.
I'll give you an opportunity for that question when we get to them, Mr. Blackburn. Any further comments or questions for administration? Seeing none, I thank you for your presentation. I am now going to ask if there's anyone just here to speak in support of this submission. And if so, please turn your camera on and identify yourself. Thank you, Mr. Russler.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton and counsel. I'm gonna try and screen check here as well, but just I've got a little presentation, can show you guys some pictures of some areas. We did a lot of research on this, this has probably been ongoing for, I would say, in the range of, I don't know, a year and a half or so, between some discussions with UDI and also with this developer who's now decided to proceed in this, just in this specific area. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Can you see that on yours now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right, so basically, this came forward as a request from builders, so as to maybe Mr. Blackburn's comment there, the demand is directed from the people that are trying to sell the houses. So we are, we are seeing that from multiple areas. This developer just happens to be relatively active in the city right now and was looking to proceed with that. So what we did was, understanding that we didn't want to necessarily blanket the entire city, we went after this direct control district and a fair bit of correspondence back and forth with Mr. Johnson and planning and a couple of your directors to come up with kind of the DC zoning that is in front of you today. So I don't know, I wanna see if I can get my... So the current market trends, I guess the reason that we came to this conclusion is current trend shows a fairly significant decline in new home purchases. So as most of you are fairly aware, UDI in the last years have been kind of discussing options to try and increase sales and increase uptake of new homes within the city. Bill Grand Prairie has also been working on initiatives like this. So just looking at some of the trending maps, we got a lot of information from some of the realtors. So RE/MAX did a pretty comprehensive study of a lot of the new home sales in the last, I don't know, ten to fifteen years. So just a couple of the trends are a little bit disturbing, which is somewhat driving this. So new home purchases, about twelve, ten to twelve years ago in two thousand and nine, were about thirty-four percent of all home purchases within Grand Prairie. So that was a, that was a relatively normal number for quite some time, but since that date in around two thousand and nine, it's declined very steadily to now where it's at about nine percent. So we still have about the same amount of home sales in the city from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty. It does vary somewhat, but it, for the most part, it's fairly similar. But going down to nine percent, so we've seen, we're at about a third to a quarter of what we traditionally would see in home sales, so that's a little bit concerning. There's a lot of reasons for that. One of them is there is an increasing gap in the pricing for new versus used homes, and reducing lot sizes obviously has a big impact on that. Just, just the four to six foot difference in this, in the land development world, that equates to in the range of eighteen to twenty-five thousand dollars per lot. So it's a fairly substantial change to the price of a new home. We also see, have seen fairly significant increase in standards, and so the cost of developing land in the city has run up about, I don't know, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per lot since the, since the two thousand and nine date. And then building costs and codes have increased to, to drive the gap between new and used to a, kind of a bit of a record high. It's up in the range of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars right now for, for average home sales. So what this, we hope this will do is, as Mr. Johnson pointed out, is we're always trying to do more with less, so preventing urban sprawl and increasing density is one way to do that. So this does reduce maintenance costs to the city, so with, with smaller lots and comes more tax revenue and, and less infrastructure to maintain. So and on top of that, we, we did a lot of research across the province, comparing other Alberta cities and to see exactly where we're at, and with the intention that the city Grand Prairie remain competitive with, with other Alberta cities and adjacent municipalities. So we're not going through this, obviously, but this gives you an idea. So I'm gonna go through the differences here in a second, but this is a bunch of different zonings. So I looked at seven or eight different cities across the province, Grand Prairie, Edmonton, Calgary, Red Deer, Fort Mac, Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, Cochrane. So went through a pile, all the ninety's bylaws and NDPs and whatnot to look at the differences. And the minimum lot sizes that showed up within each of the municipalities is kind of what I was after, I wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something that wasn't proven or wasn't, wasn't the ordinary. So within Grand Prairie, currently, we are at a minimum lot size of thirty-four feet for lane lots and thirty-six feet for unlane lots, and that is in the RS district, so that's the small district that we have. So currently, we would be kind of at the top of the scale for, for where that is. We're not way out of line, but we are a little bit higher than most of the municipalities. So what, what the trend is, is you see the municipalities that are similar size to us are maybe slightly smaller or at the same range as where Grand Prairie is. But as you move into the bigger centers such as Edmonton and Calgary, you see they're a lot fine, lot sizes, so you get down in the twenty-five foot range. And I'll show you some pictures here shortly of what those are. So but as you get into, there are a lot of similar cities. One of the, one of the most interesting probably was Cochrane. I paid a lot of attention to Cochrane and Wood Buffalo and Fort Mac, being that they have similar type of vehicles as we do, lots of larger trucks and whatnot. So their lot sizes currently are quite a bit lower than ours. There's also a lot of comprehensively planned areas, so areas where they specifically say this is where we're gonna allow small lots, and so that's what I love motive in Lethbridge there, and that is common across many of the municipalities. So with the DC, I believe it's gonna be twenty-eight, the lot sizes that we're proposing being at thirty and thirty-four, you can kind of see from that table, they don't, they're not excessively small, they're kind of in the middle, probably between the large municipalities and ones of our size. And then we, we have increased aesthetics and green space just as part of the plan. So just speaking a little bit to a few of the issues that, that are out there. So Mr. Johnson in his report identified a few things that needed to be, or that we did look at. One of them, the two major ones that I would say are the two that you can't necessarily solve, one being parking. So this is a little map to showing the differences between all the different districts. So the DC is on the left there, that's the one that, that we're proposing. With RS in the middle, that's the small lot, and RG is the, currently a forty-foot lot minimum. So basically, from the left, thirty-four foot, thirty-six foot, and a forty-foot lot. And then what, what you'll see on that is the available parking, I guess, is, is kind of shown on all three of them in this location. So what happens is, because we've got a sixty percent driveway, we reduced the parking by about four feet. So what that, that does is changes it from available parking on between driveways from twenty-four feet down to twenty. So there is a change, it's not huge. I did look up a lot of, a lot of vehicle sizes coming into this. Even on the forty-foot lots, parking is a problem. And I think, you know, talking to people within the city and whatnot, even in the larger lot areas, even, even at twenty-four feet, most vehicle trucks are twenty to twenty-two, so there isn't necessarily room. And even in the picture, you kind of notice there, there's actually traffic bylaws and within the traffic act that you can't park within one point five meters of driveways. So, so it will get smaller, smaller vehicles will only be able to park there, but we, we currently would have an issue with forty-foot lots regardless. So this is just a little bit of a blown-up thing. Parking and snow removal, kind of the same issue really. I mean, at the end of the day, it's about that space between the driveways. So that's the snow clearing, snow clearing challenges are exactly the same item there in that there, there is four feet less space now to put snow. So, so we, we do see that, and that's up to the RG district, it's less, it's only two feet less than RS. But, so, so given that, we, we have made some provisions within the district. But those are the two that really, there, there is no way to resolve. So there's a few others here that, that we worked through, aesthetics being one of them. So there's not, as Mr. Johnson said, it's not really our place to comment on it, but we did pay a little bit of attention to it and try to, try to make it a little more palatable, I guess. So a few things that we did within the zoning, if you did read the document, is we required, the required front veranda. This is basically to increase curb appeal and make it look a little bit better, that being enclosure basically in front of the house. We also maximize the development above the garages to improve the dwelling aesthetics. So that basically means we're trying to, putting a bonus room above the garage makes the house look a little bit better and avoids a street full of garages sticking out from houses. We, we have a required minimum of one tree now planted per lot. What that does is, most of the roads within this area are local roadways, so they wouldn't have a requirement for trees under the city's engineering standards. So by putting this in the district, we've now ensured that one tree will be on each lot, which will, and as you'll see from some of the pictures, it's, it makes it look significantly better. Oops, sorry. And then also, we've added pedestrian sidewalks on both sides of the street. So being that they were local roads, they would have had block, blockways only on one side, but given that we were trying to dress this area up a little bit, we're putting a sidewalk on the other side as well. Other issues, I think Mr. Johnson's covered off. Secondary suites, not necessarily an issue here because you need a forty-foot lot to do that, and we wouldn't have any lanes. The lanes that are, that are provided are short and straight, so shouldn't be an issue. And RV storage concerns wouldn't be any different than a larger lot districts. The economic impact, I do think there is one. It's about a seventeen percent increase in density that we achieved with very, really no change in infrastructure, so less roads, less, less pipes, less concrete, less asphalt. So with that, just within this area, and it is about, about seventy lots is what it works out to, we were able to obtain about ten more taxable properties within the same area. So it'll reduce the, the price of the properties, but it'll increase the assessment just due to the fact that, that those ten properties wouldn't exist unless this district did. So that should bring in a three hundred and fifty thousand per unit, ballpark number of three and a half million dollars in assessment increase. So why should this proceed? One of the, again, one of the things that we looked at here was trying to use, do more with less and, and try and pay attention to concerns. We have had a lot of meetings, like I said, with Mr. Johnson and have fair bit forth, and I think we're both quite happy with where we've gone on that. We do want to remain competitive within Alberta city. This is something that I hear representing land developers quite regularly. I do, it is fairly common knowledge in the development world that there are lots are relatively large compared to the rest of the province. Not that that's necessarily a bad thing, it's just something that they notice. So now that, you know, if this puts us a little bit more competitive, that would be, that's, that's definitely a good thing. And then also, this, being that it is a trial run, and it kind of allows the city to test a small area with this type of concept. I can't speak to the speed at which this will develop, obviously, the economy right now is not great, so I don't expect this year to have fifty houses pop up in this little area, but it would allow the city to kind of see that concept. But it would allow the city to kind of see that concept, um, without maybe committing to it and, and zoning across the entire municipality. So I'm going to pop through the questions for a minute here. So this is the concept. Um, it's, uh, this is kind of the, the land use district and, and whatnot that we have. So basically along here we would have, and this could change, we haven't applied for subdivision yet, but this is kind of a fourplex concept with, uh, semi-detached duplexes. Uh, and then small lot district through, through this entire area. So, um, we feel it will work fairly well. It's in an area that doesn't necessarily affect any of the current existing landowners, um, and, and, and works well within the district. So this, this is a few pictures of, of areas that are exactly like that lot. So out of the area that we researched, they pulled a few screenshots of, uh, of Google. This is one that I worked on when I was working at Calgary. Uh, so this is in a neighborhood called Riverside, fairly new, narrower roads than ours. So our roads would be five, one point five meters wider than these. But this, on the left, you have twenty-five foot semi-detached, uh, duplexes and, or semi-detached units. And on the right, you've got thirty-foot lane houses. So, uh, fairly nice looking street. Again, same thing, we did sidewalks on both sides. One of the differences would be that we'd have trees on every lot. So that's Cochrane, small area is another one from Cochrane with garages. Um, same thing, busy driveways, which is kind of expected in Alberta, a lot of vehicles and, and toys. So we do see that, uh, with, in this case, minimal street parking. I don't know if that's due to the time of day or whatnot, but, uh, in this particular situation, that's what the case was. Um, here's a shot in Calgary. This is in, uh, Cranston, which is a fairly large development down there. Uh, streets along the left, this would be lane product. So these are actually smaller than what we would, that we're, what we're proposing, um, dressed up front guards and whatnot, which is sort of the intention, trees on every lot type of thing. And then this is the Fort McMurray. So Fort Mac has very, has not great, um, street view information. So, uh, but these are thirty-four foot garage houses, which is the exact same size, uh, of product that we're proposing. Um, so that's the, that's the gist of it. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rossler. I'll look for comments and questions. Uh, Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks for the presentation, Mr. Rossler. I, I do appreciate the thoroughness and, uh, it helps me to understand a little better what it is that, uh, that the developer is after. Uh, I need to be upfront and say I do not like, uh, narrow lot developments. And, uh, even a pretty house doesn't have much curb appeal when it's jammed up against a whole bunch of other pretty little houses. So, um, if, if I were to support this, I would need to know that it's because there are customers who want it. Not simply because there are builders that feel we'll be able to sell them better if they're a little bit lower in cost and, uh, with the hope of attracting customers. Um, so again, I'll ask the question, is there any indication that there is a market for this? Or is this a trial balloon to see if it will attract customers?
Mr. Rossler.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, so through, I mean, the market is, is the market. It's, it's often difficult to predict exactly what will happen. What I can say is it is a very, very common theme for the last probably five years, uh, that house prices are too high in the new home market. So, uh, this is an intention or, or with the intention of trying to lower that. Uh, I, I don't, I wouldn't say it's a, it's the be all, end all solution to everything. But if there is a definite direction out there that home prices currently, uh, you'll need to get to a spot where and, and a young family can afford to get into a house of, of this type, right? Um, getting this likely, and, and I'm speculating a little bit here, but likely this is, this type of zoning is going to put these houses down in around the three hundred to three hundred and twenty range to, uh, with a garage. Uh, and, and that twenty to thirty thousand, I mean, that's a ten percent difference in, in the home price, uh, from three fifty. So that in a lot of cases is the difference between a family getting approved for a mortgage and not. Um, and then on the, on the flip side, the lane product, uh, I expect those to be lower than that. So right now, I wouldn't say it's about the builders trying to, um, trying to feel out, uh, the market and, and find buyers. It's, I would say it's more about them trying to go where the market is. And, and they definitely have made that clear. And, and, and it's not one or two developers or builders. It, it is something that I hear across the board. And that three hundred thousand mark is really the target right now. That's where the builders and developers want to see their product at. And with the current zoning, uh, good zoning that are out there, it's, it's very difficult to achieve. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Further comments or questions? Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Um, what? Sorry, bedtime apparently isn't going great behind me. Uh, I'm wondering if you could either show me that slide you had again with the different parking sizes? Or just tell me what the parking lot size would be for those three districts you showed. I just, I don't a hundred percent trust what I wrote down was accurate.
Sure. There you go, you got me back there. Hello? All right, so we should, if I go back to, that's the one that you were looking at, I believe?
The one before that, I think.
One before, so they're the same.
Gotcha.
First one was a little difficult to read, so.
Gotcha.
Uh, so essentially the available parking on, on, uh, a forty-foot lot, which is the biggest, uh, minimum lot size we have today, is about twenty-four feet. Yeah. Available parking on a thirty-four foot lot is, is twenty feet.
And then, then sorry, I thought you had one before that where it also had the RC district in it or, or RS, gotcha.
Yeah. RS currently is twenty-two. So it's a, it goes up by two feet with each of the districts.
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna add, so glad to ask that. All right, and then my other question for you was, um, what kind of costs does, what kind of costs happen when you add a rear lane to a house? In terms of when you're making smaller lots, but they've also have to have that rear lane? Are you achieving those cost savings that make it, that get in that three hundred range? Or does the lane just add too much?
Uh, no, what we do see, I mean, so, so you're, you're, it's definitely advantageous. There is a cost to lane, obviously. Um, but it's in the range of, you know, a thousand dollars a meter. So you're not talking about, uh, crazy amounts on the, on the lot. The savings of the, of the four to six feet is significantly more. So, um, and then that's a different product too, right? You're building a house in an area like that that doesn't have, probably doesn't have a garage on it. Um, so it, it, you're able to drop the price down a little bit. Um, not the intention with that. I mean, we saw a fair uptake of, of, uh, lane product for quite some time and then it kind of disappeared. And, uh, the reason being in most of the developers' opinions is to do with the fact that it, that the lot sizes did get bigger. So though, uh, right now, um, just to put it in perspective, our minimum lot size for a lane product is thirty-four feet. That's the minimum lot size for a garage product in most of the other municipalities in the province. So the builders that come here from, uh, from Edmonton or, or even the local builders, uh, they, they're used to building, you know, eighteen hundred square foot houses on thirty-four foot lots, not, not smaller. So, so when we go down to thirties with lanes, um, it spreads that cost a little bit more and it, it is still advantageous.
Great, and then I, I really do see that in the DC district, it feels like there's two, two somewhat different ideas in terms of you've got that half of it on the east side with the lane product and the part on the west side without the lane product. In that part with, in that part with the lane product on the east side, um, just to make sure I'm understanding it, is there opportunity with those lanes to get to that three hundred thousand-ish range that I haven't just heard from you, I've also heard from Realtors, is the magic number for qualifying for mortgages for many?
Yeah, so this is the concept today. Obviously it could change, but, um, but I, you know, the lane product that we have in there currently is, is right here. Um, I think quite easily you get to that, um, with, with, I mean, obviously I'm, I'm not a builder, so I can't say for sure. But I did appear in talking to them that that's the target that they would have. I think their hope is to get in that, close to that number even on the other, on the garage part. So, um, you know, that's, if you take a garage for the most part is about twenty thousand dollars, that should be the difference between the two. Um, but I mean, it, it's easy to think that twenty thousand dollars doesn't matter, but, uh, that's why people live in houses without garages. Everyone wants a garage in Grand Prairie, but that twenty thousand dollars is sometimes too much. So, um, so that's the difference that we're talking about. And, and, and just, just the land costs alone in this case are enough to make that margin.
Great, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just, uh, Mr. Rossler, just if you can, you, you'd mentioned about sidewalks on both sides. Can you just let me know, are those proposed to be separate sidewalks? Or are these just your, your typical sidewalks that would be abutting right onto the street?
Uh, they would look very similar to this. So they would be mono walks, uh, one point five meter wide. So these I'm just guessing, but by looking at them, I think they're one point two five. So we'd be one foot wider than both of these on either side of the road.
Okay, and just.
And our roadway, our roadway is five feet wider than this as well. So we, it, it will look a little bit bigger than, than what's in this picture.
Okay, and I was going to actually lead into my next question. When you, I appreciate you doing the data and looking at other municipalities around the province. But, um, it doesn't maybe paint the whole story of, of, of design standards? Are we also comparing areas that are going to have separate sidewalks, same size road widths, those, those kind of things? Or, or was that a layer of detail that was just more, more than you did at this point?
Um, no, we, we have, right.
Nope, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, we've gone through that in a lot of municipalities and, and it, it does vary significantly. Uh, I don't think we're very out of line with, uh, the design standards. I mean, that's something that, um, you know, there, I mean, absolutely, I can point you to municipalities that, that don't have separate sidewalks. I can point you to municipalities that have narrower roads. Uh, I can point you to municipalities that have higher standards than we do. Um, but for the most part, we're not out of line in, in standards. Um, the, you know, our, our cost of development here is similar to what it is in Edmonton. Uh, we don't, we don't see massive differences there where, where we see differences in our, in land prices and, and our average home prices, which are, they already are lower than Edmonton. But, uh, we're, we're not quite at that level of, of population.
Okay, I just wanted, so if I'm understanding this correctly by doing this, we wouldn't be necessarily changing any land use bylaw? We're not talking about changing lot sizes just specifically with this zoning application today?
Correct, so, but this is a direct control district, so it would only apply to that area that's outlined. Um, I, I don't know what will happen. Uh, there are some, I mean, it, it, it's possible that someone else can sprawl with it, but I don't have anything on my plate right now. Um, so I, I mean, if, if this goes well, I suspect that, um, you'll see more applications, um, but that would be up to council at some, um, at the council.
Thank you for that.
Great, thanks, Counselor Pla, Counselor Teason.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, thanks, Mr. Rossler, uh, for, for the presentation. I appreciate it. And, uh, my question really is sort of a tag on to Counselor Platt's question. Uh, it was addressed a little bit in the report, but I just kind of need to know the design standards of, of this. But, uh, with, uh, the smaller lots and the potential for on-street parking, as has been discussed by our administration, and sidewalks on both sides of the street that enter right onto the street. Um, what, what is the plan that you've discussed potentially with administration around snow storage? I guess the reason I ask that question is when I think operationally, if our snow crews are going into Kensington to clear out all the snow, uh, that's an extra expense on the city if there's no place to store it. There's no corner cul-de-sacs, uh, there's no, there's no parks on those, on that lane. Uh, so a lot of that snow is going to have to be trucked out, uh, upon, upon clearing. Uh, have you had those discussions with administration?
Thank you, Counselor Teason. So not, we haven't had direct discussions about maintenance and, and how it would work. Uh, but just to give you a bit of an idea, the only area that, that I, I mean, that I would say is probably going to be more problematic than it, when it was previously, would be through here along eighty-third. And the reason I say that is because everywhere else, like when you look at this block, I mean, you've got flanking lots, so there's lots of room for snow storage in that area. Um, these are already multifamily. Um, the, the semi-detached that we have currently planned is, is very similar to what the RG district allows anyway. Uh, and then on these roads, by putting the lane in, we've actually taken all, we've, we've probably at least doubled, probably tripled the, their available snow storage there. Um, just by taking all the driveways away. So on, on this road and also on, uh, this road, I don't really expect any issues with snow storage. Uh, the lane, uh, I think, I believe they removed, uh, snow from all lanes anyways. I'm not actually positive or not enough to care all about it. Uh, so really, well, the only area that I would have, um, where I think we've reduced the amount of snow storage is on eighty-third Ave here in front of these lots. And in those cases, uh, again, we're, we're talking about four feet. So, um, I don't know what the impact would be. Uh, it is a smaller area. I don't, I don't know if it, if it, it probably likely isn't more work. It's just a matter of whether or not they can fit it in those spaces. So, uh, but we still, we're still talking about twenty feet. It's still a, you know, still a fairly good sized area.
Okay, no, thank you for that, Mr. Rossler. Actually eighty-third was the street that I was looking at. I was like, oh man, that's a lot of road to plow without anywhere for the snow to go. Um, just a question in regards to the, the laneway, uh, developments, uh, in the back lane. Uh, anticipating to build, I would, I would assume at least two driveway spots for the residents of those houses?
Yeah, so as part of the, generally as part of the development permit, there'd be two paid stalls constructed in the back. Either that or there's an option for garage there as well. Um, but given the target, um, price point of the unit, I suspect that a lot of them, uh, would, would just have parking pads in the back. Would be provided, and there's a minimum of two required under ground use by law.
Yeah, yeah.
So they would be in the back.
Beautiful, okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Further comments or questions from counsel? I see no one's hand, but I can't see everybody, one second. Counselor Menhaz.
Thank you, Scott. I think you answered a lot of questions. The back lane was my, one question and then these lots are, how deep they're going to be? Hundred feet, hundred ten feet or eighty feet or what's it going to be, you know?
Yeah, so like Counselor Menhaz, we, we haven't changed a lot depth, so they're still standard depth lots. So they're in, they would vary a little bit. I mean, obviously they're not all the same, um, but they vary from, I think the shortest would likely, I'm going to tell the editor, but thirty-four to thirty-five meters. So in the hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen foot range, so there wouldn't be anything shorter than a hundred and ten.
And I like the sidewalk in the both sides, but how wide this road is going to be? Like you said, one and a half feet wider than Calgary and Campbell's. But like how, how wide is it? The two car can go if one car is parked on the side? I don't like the mission height when they did it with narrow roads.
Yeah, so, so that's changed since, um, so if, if you've been in any of the neighborhoods that have been constructed in the last, I think it was two thousand and eight, the standard. Um, somewhere in that, probably in the last five to seven years, uh, since the new standards have been developed. Uh, the road widths are, are wider than the older neighborhoods that where you couldn't drive down them in the winter. And it does seem to have made a pretty drastic difference. That extra, it doesn't seem like much, a meter and a half, which is only five feet, but it's the difference between being able to pass in the winter or not. So, um, it is better. Um, we, we actually in the development world kind of like the road width. It's, it's, um, an increase from, from, um, the twenty year old roads that were congested, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, any further comments, questions? I see none, so thank you, Mr. Rossler. I will ask if there's anyone else here to speak in support of this submission. If so, please turn on your camera at this time and identify yourself. Again, I'll ask one more time if there's anyone else here to sup, to speak in support of this submission. of this application. Seeing none, I will now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this submission. If you're here to speak in opposition of this, um, bylaw amendment, please turn your camera on now and identify yourself. Seeing none, what, none, I will call this public hearing closed and move to business arising. Councillor Minhas.
I'll move the motion. I'll simply give the first reading to bylaw C thirteen forty-four C being amended to Kingston outline plan.
Great, thank you, that motion's in order. And, uh, seeing no, this is, there is no debate in first reading, so I will call the question. All those in favor? That motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to second reading, councillor Minhas.
I ask council to give second reading to bylaw C dash thirteen forty-four C.
Great, thank you. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Are we allowed to ask administration questions again, or is that ship sailed?
You have had that opportunity. If, um, there's, there's not really an opportunity for questions for administration right now unless there's something new that has come to your attention, but other than that, it's not really, um, the time for that.
So, could I maybe, I, I had a couple of questions in mind, but I do have one that is more procedural, so could I ask-
Okay.
Uh, I won't ask the ones about the actual land use bylaw, but can I ask a procedural one?
For sure.
Um, what hap, what happens if, there's a few different things going on here, what happens if this gets defeated because council isn't comfortable with a part of this rezoning, but they're, but they're comfortable with the rest? How, how long would it take the applicant, if they had a desire to res, to resubmit, uh, based on the conversation we had today if this got defeated? How long would that take them? How much money would that cost them?
Mr. Johnson, are you still-
Is that something they're allowed to do, or do they have to start all over from scratch? I guess the procedural question I'm asking is, is it all or nothing? Or does council actually have an opportunity to say, yeah, we like some of it, but not all of it?
Right, so I'll ask Mr. Johnson if you're still with us, or, uh, Director Glavine. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Um, I believe there is some opportunity for, uh, making amendments to the, um, to the proposed bylaws. Um, as far as the nature of the changes and that opportunity, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so, uh, but I, I do believe there is some opportunity to make some amendments on the fly.
Does that answer your question, councillor Bressi?
Yeah, and Mayor Clayton, just to, just where, just where I'm at, there, there, to me, it really seems like there's three different things going on here. There's the east side of the development, where you have that lane block in the center with half of other blocks on the other side. I'm comfortable with that. There's along Eighty-third Avenue on the west side of the development, you've got the RG to RC, which I, which I can get comfortable with, but you've also got on Eighty-third Avenue at the same time, you've got the DC on the south side of Eighty-third Avenue, and that's the part that I'm not comfortable with. So, I'm kinda comfortable with two-thirds of this, but not the one-third, and I'm wondering if there's, what the options are with council? Is it just defeat the bylaw if I'm not comfortable with the whole thing, or are there other options available?
Okay, um, I'm gonna leave that with Mr. Johnson for a minute, i- if you had additional comments for that. If not, I'll, um, give me a minute here while I check with Legislative Services.
Sure, well, and I guess what I'll, uh, I guess what I'll say is, I just, I just said where I am, so I guess I'll, I'll say why, why I'm there. And, um, and for me, it really is, I, I've been supportive of us allowing narrow lots, allowing more, uh, allowing more narrow lots in the city, because in other proposals, they've seen more, they've seemed very thoughtfully designed. And it's one thing when there's a narrow lot that's taking advantage of green space or side yards or frontage that won't have a driveway. I'm fairly comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with both zoning from RG to RC and also allowing narrower lots than we allow elsewhere in our land use bylaw, just because I think that creates issues on both sides of the street. And four, uh, four feet, twenty-four feet, twenty feet worth of parking space, I think that four feet actually is significant. I, if I'm understanding our land use bylaw correct, correctly, I think that that actually takes the parking stalls smaller than we allow in our land use bylaw, uh, when you take them down to s, to six point one meters, and it's just, having that issue on one side of the street, I can, I can live with, I think people will deal with it. I think when it's on both sides of the street, there's gonna be very limited, if any, opportunities to park a truck. That's something that I'm not as comfortable with. So I'm kinda comfortable with two-thirds of this, but I can't support the whole package, I don't think.
So, uh, councillor Bressi, speaking with Legislative Services, we, you have a couple options, support the motion, or the bylaw rather, amend it, or defeat it?
Sure, so I guess I'm asking, asking are there actually any amendments I can, I can, I can make? Like, those are always the three options I have, but-
But you could, so you could amend it to remove a certain line, right?
Okay, but can I amend it to change a map, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Um, to change the map, yeah. That, I don't know, Mr. Johnson?
That's, that's the issue, it's a map that's the issue, not a line that's the issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Um, I, um, in my experience, I've, I've never seen, uh, rezoning as amended, I've, we've dealt with text amendments as amended, but I'm not sure about, uh, rezonings as amended, like as the map, but that's not to say it's not possible, I'm just, I just haven't experienced that.
Councillor Bressi? Yeah, go ahead councillor Bressi.
So, I guess where I'm at today is, uh, I'm, I'm against the bylaw. I hope that, I, I think I'll be voting, voting no, I don't think I'll offer an amendment on the fly. Uh, it's complicated also, who knows if the developer would actually be interested in that. So I think I'll be encouraging council to defeat this bylaw. If it does get defeated, then I also think we should follow the follow-up motion to have administration expedite, uh, reapplication and waive all fees involved with that. I don't wanna be a pain in the butt, I wa, but I, I just can't support it as is. So I, for the reasons I shared, I hope my colleagues will defeat this bylaw, but then also give direction to make it easier, as easy as possible to reapply if the developer so chooses.
Thank you, councillor Blackburn.
If I may just offer another suggestion.
Sure.
If, um, uh, if, if we need time to consider what might need to be changed in the bylaw, we could postpone third reading to the next meeting, and that would give people time to study, time to make a proposal about what's the best way to amend it.
Perfectly, yep. Thank you for that option. Councillor Plett.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton, and thanks, uh, councillor Blackburn for your comment. I think that's a, a fair way to look at it, it's pretty tough to start amending developments on the fly, for sure. Um, I just wanna say I will support this. I think that the biggest reason I wanna support it is I think we need to start looking at areas to try little projects. I mean, I, I'm not in support of saying we should have land use bylaws changes where we're making all lots smaller again, but I do wanna be cognizant of what's going on with our industry and what's going on around the province, and that, as much as we may not like small lots, that's the status quo in every other major city in Alberta, and our lots are substantially larger than those, and four feet seem, doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a lot of space when you're taking that over quarter section land. So I will be supporting this, mostly 'cause I'd like to see how this looks over five or seven years, uh, give this some time to see what happens, um, and give us our administration a chance to say, was this a problem? What would we have changed? Would, was it worth it? But I think to not have projects like this come on is a mistake with us, as a municipality right now, I think we need to be looking at ways to figure out how to get some, some construction happening in our community again. This may be the only phase that goes in the ground if it was approved today, so I guess for me, when we're talking about COVID, economic recovery, um, I think industries try to put together a fairly compelling reason why this makes sense, and I think because it's a small district that we have control of, I think this is a good opportunity for, for the city to look at moving forward with a project like this, to see how it works. So, I hope council will support this, um, and maybe we can look at land use bylaws changes down the road, but this is a way for us to look at that.
Thank you councillor Plett. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, um, I am in support of this. Uh, I think that the administration and developer has put a lot, have put a lot of effort into this, and, uh, like councillor Plett had said, if we don't try things, then we'll know, never know what works. And with all that being said, uh, that industry is really in a, in a really bad spot right now. And in the end, if they build all these lots and nobody buys a house, then we know that that was an epic failure. But I think what I heard from a number of parties here today is, this is what the consumer wants, and why not give them what the consumer wants? It's no different than any other, uh, city in the, in the province, and this is where they're getting driven to make a co, comments about Grand Prairie is, you can't build there 'cause they want, they want big lots. And I'm willing to make that sacrifice, and you know what? Um, there are some beautiful houses that have been built on small lots, and, uh, I, I, I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor O'Toole. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will call the motion. Please vote. The motion is carried, five to three. Mr. Manha, uh, councillor Minhas.
Can I have third reading for, for the bylaw C dash thirteen forty-four C in this meeting?
Great, thank you. So this is a motion to have third reading, it must be unanimous in order to be, uh, for us to have third reading tonight? So there is an opportunity for discussion or debate. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would encourage council to support this particular motion. It is, for, for me, um, I'm not optimistic about us finding a good way to amend this even in two weeks, I really, I really do think this probably is, uh, do over and do it as quickly as possible if council can't support this as is. And if we're gonna ask the developer to do that, then I'd hate to introduce an extra two-week delay before council makes that decision two weeks from now. So, uh, um, I didn't support the last reading, probably won't support the next, next one, but I also don't wanna slow things down if I'm on the minority of ca, of council. Uh, so I'm just not optimistic about us finding a solution around this, uh, and so therefore I would encourage my colleagues to support this motion, but I'd still encourage them not to actually support third reading when we get to it.
Thank you councillor Bressi. Councillor Blackburn.
Uh, thank you. Despite the suggestion that I made that, uh, we could delay this, um, it's not my intention to delay it, so I'm going to support the motion as well.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, uh, I will call the motion, please vote. That's carried unanimously, therefore we're able to have third reading tonight. Councillor Minhas.
Yes, uh, I ask council to give third reading to bylaw C dash thirteen forty-four C.
Great, thank you on that. I see no one in the queue, so I will call the question. Having third reading on bylaw C dash one four three, one three four four C, please vote. And that is carried five to three. Thank you for that. Uh, additional business arising, councillor Minhas.
Yes, I give the first reading to bylaw C twelve sixty dash one three four, be an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Perfect, so first reading for bylaw C dash twelve sixty one three four, an amendment to the land use bylaw. There's no discussion or debate on first reading, I ask you, please vote. That's carried unanimous, or sorry, it's carried six to two. Now, uh, councillor Minhas.
I ask council to give second reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one three four.
Great. Comments or questions on bylaw C twelve sixty dash one three four? An amendment to the land use bylaw. Seeing no one, I will call the question, please vote. And that is carried six to as well. Next, uh, councillor Minhas.
Can have the third reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one three four in this meet, meeting.
Thank you councillor Minhas, this is a, a motion to have third reading tonight, bylaw, to bylaw C twelve sixty dash one three four. Uh, there, this must be unanimous in order for us to have third reading here tonight. Uh, any comments, questions, uh, on having, the merits of having third reading here tonight? Seeing none, I will call the question, please vote. That's carried unanimously, we are able to have third reading here tonight. Councillor Minhas.
Uh, I ask council to give the third reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one three four as amended to the land use bylaw.
Great, thank you, that's a motion to give third reading to bylaw C twelve sixty dash one three four being amendment to the land use bylaw. Seeing no comments or questions, I will call the motion, please vote. That is carried five to three. Thank you for that. Okay. No problem. Okay, moving along, I see no other business arising, so under item number fifteen, delegation business, the youth advisory council. Any business arising? Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that we accept their presentation for information.
Great, thank you for that. Comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the motion, those, all those, actually, please vote. Moving on to item number sixteen, council member reports. I didn't, uh, again, I forgot to ask at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm gonna go in the chambers first and start, uh, council member reports or any, uh, roundtable items. I'll start with councillor Thiessen.
Oh, you're gonna regret this.
I always do.
Yeah, you usually do. Uh, no, thank you, uh, Mayor Clayton, I appreciate it. I had a busy, busy couple of weeks of committee meetings, uh, over the last couple of weeks, uh, so I'll try to whizz through them as quickly as possible. On, uh, February twenty-third, I met with, uh, Nighthawk, that was, uh, so we got updates on the hill recovery program, um, there's, uh, as of, I guess tomorrow, um, there'll be a presentation to the MDA Greenview to try to secure the fifty percent of the hill recovery fund that council's already supported for three fifty-three, so they're gonna hopefully knock it out of the park for the MDA Greenview. We also received a very generous donation from Miss Margaret Bowes, who donated ten thousand dollars towards our landslide recovery, which is very, uh, very generous. We also have Rotary Club funding in there for assistance, uh, as well as, um, I would encourage people to check out the Mackenzie Top Peak in Alberta competition right now, there's fifty thousand dollars available, uh, for whoever gets the most votes, and that would go a long way to helping us with our landslide recovery. Uh, so tell your friends, tell your family, tell everybody, uh, to go to the Mackenzie Top Peak and vote for Nighthawk. Um, we are taking, uh, classroom bookings, uh, with, uh, public and Catholic schools. Uh, the only downside to that is, is due to social distancing and being able to manage our costs, we've had to raise the student prices, just marginally, not, not too, too much, but, uh, uh, it's not something we wanted to do, but it's something that we had to do. Um, some good news, uh, all of our lessons were sold out for the month of February and are sold out for March as well, so, uh, lessons are still going strong there. And, uh, in ra, in regards to the financials, our year-to-date, uh, on our budget, uh, for revenues is actually a bit lower than budgeted, but we have done a good job at, uh, keeping our expenses in check. keeping our expenses in check, and so we're not, uh, riding in any strong deficits. That's the Nighthawk, uh, update. Uh, on February twenty-fourth, uh, we had the Downtown Association AGM. Uh, many members of council were there, so I won't reveal all the details, but I would like to show, shout out, uh, to the owner of Better Than Fred's and the staff, John Crisca, uh, for becoming the Downtowner of the Year Award, uh, doing lots of great stuff for the community, from building wheelchair ramps without being asked, uh, and making it a inclusive place and rolling with the punches that COVID gave. Uh, also, uh, the winner of the Art Woulette Award went to Melissa St. Pierre, the owner of Petals and Posies Flower Company. So congratulations to both of those businesses, one, uh, for being a great Downtowner and two, for making the downtown look so great. Um, moving along, sorry, I got a few here. Um, we had, uh, the Community Advisory Board on Housing meeting, uh, as well as a, a training session. On February twenty-fifth, uh, we met and, uh, received, uh, a bit of a pre-budget rundown on what our, what our decreases were gonna be. Uh, the lady from the province talked, uh, for a good portion of time.
I'll see you on top of Miss Foot.
Yep, exactly. Uh, and, uh, yeah, it was pretty much trying to break it to us in a lot of words that we're gonna lose a lot of funding for, for housing and social supports. Um, but, uh, all was good, it was a good meeting. Uh, Grand Spirit Foundation, uh, Management Committee, uh, met on February twenty-sixth. Uh, some of the highlights there is, we had a discussion with Covenant Care about services they provide as we discuss, uh, working out, uh, potential housing projects in Grand Prairie with them. Um, we also did a bit of, uh, policy and an update to our safety and audit, uh, procedures as well, and, uh, just something that I think everybody's a bit interested in. Uh, we did have a couple of COVID outbreaks, one at the Heritage Manor. Uh, there was twenty-one positive COVID counts, uh, uh, for staff and residents, uh, to date. Only, unfortunately, one person passed away, uh, but, uh, everyone is clear there now. And just as we cleared Heritage Lodge, Wildrose Manor had an outbreak with one of their staff members, so one equals outbreak, so that's where we're at, uh, with that. Uh, some of the vaccine numbers that, uh, we, the board got for reporting, um, for our first round of vaccines, we've got about, uh, eighty-two point seven percent uptake on vaccines for our seniors and about eleven point two percent on our staff. Now, it's, uh, interesting numbers, uh, especially with the hard push, especially in the media on getting vaccinated. Um, uh, Grand Spirit's trying to move their seniors closer to ninety percent, uh, and hopefully I'll have that update, uh, the next council meeting or when we meet next. Uh, but what we're seeing, uh, with staff is, a lot of staff are saying, no, they don't want to take the vaccine right now. In fact, staff refusals are being seen province, province-wide, and most sites are reporting under fifty percent of staff in care homes receiving the vaccine, as in they're obligating out of it. Um, so we've hired an educator and nurse, uh, that is visiting each site to talk about the benefits of receiving the vaccine, uh, and is, and they are assisting us with communications and trust development. Um, just gonna switch over to a new screen now. On February twenty-seventh, I met with Peace Library Systems, uh, so it's a very full week. Uh, we had our, our full board meeting. Uh, some of the highlights, uh, that we had there is, uh, we got an update from our CEO on the pandemic response and PLS, and we, we changed a few of our policies, uh, uh, to fit with the work experience, uh, around the pandemic response and how we'd, how we'd work with people staying after work by themselves or, um, sicknesses, work from home, stuff like that. Um, and we made several revisions to policies such as our finance policy, service points, hours of service, uh, library use policy, et cetera, et cetera, records management. Uh, anyways, it was a big policy-filled meeting, I'm sure City Clerk would have loved that one. Uh, that's why we pay her the big bucks. Uh, and guess what? I'm done. Wow, I can't believe I did it. So, all, all in less than five minutes, I think, maybe not, someone's probably timed me, but I would like to put a big shout out, uh, on Friday, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, several members of council and the mayor herself, uh, the Women of Influence Awards. Uh, incredible event, celebrating women and the great achievements that, that they have accomplished in our community, for our community. Uh, and being at today's International Women's Day, I'd just like to highlight all the women in our community, region, province, country, and around the world. Heck, I'll even say, let's give a shout out to all those alien women out there. I'm sure Captain Kirk is all about that. But, uh, thank you, ladies, for all the good stuff that you do for our community, for being leaders, for being change-makers, and for, uh, being the nurturers and caregivers of our society. It's, uh, really an honor every time we get to celebrate you and to be a part of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I think it was the space women that put you over your five minutes, I think you were good till there, but, um, not as busy as Counselor Thiessen with, uh, with committees. Uh, did have an economic development subcommittee, I believe there was some, we had really good discussion, and we always have a hard time keeping our committee meetings as short as we want them to keep, just because they're a very engaged group. Um, so there'll be some recommendations probably come into council here the next, uh, next council meeting, I'm hoping. Um, also, just wanted to mention a, a great conversation I had with a, a developer, speaking of development earlier, from, not from Grand Prairie Edmonton primarily, and, uh, looking at Grand Prairie, they do own a piece of land here now, potentially looking at doing a phase. Um, was interesting, the comments were very skewed about lot sizes, but it was good to hear they're a little bit more optimistic on Grand Prairie, and, uh, they've owned land here for quite a few years, but they are looking at, uh, maybe making a first-stage presence. Um, other than that, uh, the AGM was great, uh, has success like normal for downtown. Um, did want to throw a thank you out to Counselor Bressi for setting up a quick geothermal chat with some of our council, with some other colleagues in the province, as their city's been looking at potential options with that, and I think that was a, an interesting open for me and, and a lot of time spent on Google trying to get a quick Kohl's Notes version of what geothermal could look like for area, but, uh, did appreciate the, the opportunity to get some education and some feedback on that. So thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. And, uh, that's all I have to report for this council meeting.
Great, thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, three quick things to update council on is, one, Counselor, Counselor Blackburn and I attended the final orientation meeting for the Police Advisory Committee. So it was exciting to see a group of engaged citizens. This was the first time where they really had opportunities to ask questions. It was, I'm getting a sneak peek of some of the conversations, I'm sure they'll, the members of the public that are on that committee will be bringing to our work. So that was exciting. A fun one for me was, I got to virtually attend the premier and panel discussions surrounding the life, uh, Life Without Diagnosis, which is a local short documentary made by Mariah, Mariah Braun, uh, looking at Tiffany, a local, very involved commi- community member who's living a life without diagnosis. So it was interesting to learn more about the story of somebody who has been a big part of our community, and also great to see our film industry just thriving here in Grand Prairie. Then the last thing I'll highlight is, today I atten- I attended the AUMA, uh, International Women's Day event, again, virtually. It was great being with over a hundred elected officials from across the province. I know I saw Mayor Clayton's camera turned on briefly, I'm not, my apologies, I'm not sure if other members of council were there, but, um, it was great seeing some actual data about the participation of women in municipal politics, and also there was an interesting startup that's got some things going on, on Twitter to try to combat negative, negativity and toxicity in politics. And it was interesting seeing some of the actual hard stats, uh, uh, in social media with politicians in general and woman candidates in particular. But the one big thing I want to highlight from there is Parity YEG, so it's an organization in Edmonton, has a toolkit for women who are running for office. And they said it's open to anybody in the province that wants to, that wants to sign up, can access this toolkit, but it's a pretty comprehensive look at what it takes to be on council and also what it takes to successfully campaign for council. So I know there's some people sniffing out a run, I'd encourage them to check out Parity YEG and their toolkit so that they can get the lowdown on what running might look like for them and how they can be successful.
Great, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Uh, Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. My apologies for that holler in the middle of, uh, Counselor Thiessen's, uh, Counselor Bressi has kids fighting and I have pets fighting, I had to alert Doug to rescue our kitten. Um, so this past, uh, two weeks, I attended the South Coast Regional Archives, um, meeting, and, um, financially, the, the archives is, uh, doing okay. Um, a lot of organizations have seen reduced expenses because of COVID restrictions, and such is the case with the SPRA as well. It's exciting that, um, there was a, a substantial private donation that they received in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and that was, um, a fantastic boost to their, uh, coffers, as well as, um, they were able to access a federal COVID grant that, um, helped, uh, to meet the, um, the, uh, requirements of sanitizing and, and organizing the office and all that sort of thing. Um, to report from there also is that, um, they processed three hundred and twenty-four T P Creeks down peed photos, many of which were made, uh, were digitized and are now available to view online at Alberta On Records, so you can check that out. Um, they're also going through some historic footage. Uh, Lindsay Mitt Neal, it has been hired as a, on a contract for a few months, I think, as an archive tech, and she's specifically working on the Indigenous Records Project. And, um, it's come to our, to her attention and the archive's attention that, um, the, there is a lot of historic footage that, um, in the context of now would certainly be considered offensive. So it's interesting to think, what then does an archive do with this? So rather than scrubbing them or destroying them, um, the archive is accurately archiving them, but with the acknowledgement that the, the item does contain potentially hurtful images or depictions. So I thought that was a really respectful way of, um, preserving history accurately, but acknowledging that, um, we made some mistakes historically, and, uh, in particular when it comes to, uh, truth and reconciliation, reconciliation in this case. Um, and, um, just there, uh, hiring shortly, the, there's an archive's Assistant Student Position pending the Young Canada Work Grant for the summer. So if there's any students out there who'd like to, um, spend some time working at the archives this coming, uh, summer, that, uh, will be available. And, um, I thought it was a really busy few we- uh, a couple of weeks as well. I likewise attended the, um, the Women of Influence, congratulations Devon Potter, Jackie Benning, and Chief Ramona Horseman on your acknowledgement of, uh, of your influence in our communities. Uh, also attended, um, meeting with, um, with, uh, our MLA Tracy Allard, uh, post, um, budget, and we always appreciate her, uh, openness to speak to us. She's, um, been really responsive in, in, um, meeting with us as we've needed, and this was no difference, and that was good to get an understanding. And quick feedback as well on questions that we'd asked at that meeting, um, she's already responded with, uh, more information, so that was really appreciated. And I popped in on the, uh, Municipal Policing Advisory Committee orientation for a little bit, and, uh, it was really good to see great community members involved in that. Um, uh, yeah, oh, and the Peace Health Advisory Council as well, I won't spend a lot of time on, but, um, the thing that really struck me about that meeting, there was a lot of time spent talking about how to improve the patient experience. And, uh, if you're not familiar with the Peace, with the Health Advisory Council, they really are grassroots, um, volunteer community members from across the Peace Region in this case, who, um, just come together to address, um, concerns and gaps and needs in our healthcare system as well. They are ambassadors to help people in the community and in the region understand what's up with healthcare these days. So that was my couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. And Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Clayton. Um, just about everything that I attended has been mentioned by somebody else. I, I will highlight the, um, the Municipal, um, Police Advisory Committee because, uh, I am a member of that committee, and, uh, um, thank you to, uh, Counselor Bressi for chairing the meeting, and, uh, thank you to each of the, um, uh, staff members who, uh, who helped members of the committee understand better, uh, their role and, um, and the, and the roles of the organizations surrounding us. Uh, it was a very well, uh, well-organized meeting and, and that was great. I'll also mention my attendance at the AGM for the Downtown Association because I know that there was some concern from the association itself about how effective their meeting might be, uh, having to do it on Zoom, and, uh, I'm pleased to report that it was, uh, extremely well-done. Um, all of the information that needed to be disseminated was, um, sent out, uh, or, or delivered at that meeting with, um, with lots of clarity, and, uh, and, and it was, it was very good. So, um, uh, Women of Influence, of course, I, I was very pleased to be part of at least a hundred and seventy-seven people that I saw, um, uh, tuned in by Zoom, uh, before we were asked to turn our cameras off. Um, so great turnout and, uh, and, um, the winners and all of the nominees were well-deserving of the audience that they had. Uh, that's all I have to report for tonight.
Great, thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Uh, as Counselor Blackburn mentioned, uh, many of the things I attended the last few weeks have already been mentioned, I will go, uh, quickly through a few of them. I had an opportunity to Zoom into two different classrooms at Mother Teresa, talk about politics, uh, at, in a grade-five classroom, as well as, uh, the transition of what it looks like, uh, from being counselor to mayor. Um, attended the downtown rehabilitation, as well as a downtown AGM, and then had the opportunity to actually go and present the, um, uh, the awards in person, which was, you know, a nice to get in, I hadn't been into Petals and Posies, great business, since have gone back to buy a friend some flowers who wasn't feeling well. So, um, you know, congratulations to Better Than Fred's and Petals and Posies for their wins. I attended the Peace Advisory, Health Advisory Committee, uh, call with other fellow counselors, as well as a budget, uh, twenty-twenty call. Um, uh, in, in regards to community stakeholders and business leaders, calls that I've had, spoke with Neil Taussan, the President of the Filipino, uh, Association, uh, Craig Tuttle, the Manager of the Safeway on the North Side, Ron Renier from Canadian Tire, and Charles Longmeat from Windsor Ford. So some great conversations, um, with those, uh, gentlemen as well. I had the opportunity to bring greetings and be, uh, a guest speaker along with Minister Ed here on the Sedulous Black History Month event, which highlighted female black-owned businesses in Canada. It was a, a really great, interesting event, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. As well, I attended the Second Troop Grand Prairie Pathfinder and Girl Guides of Canada meeting, um, great group of inspiring young women, uh, had an opportunity to speak to them about, a little bit about International Women's Day and what it's like to be a female politician. Uh, it was a really fun call. Um, I was part of the Midsize City Mayor's, um, call with the guest presenter, uh, guest presenter, Stephen Quasney from, uh, Invest Alberta, was a good conversation about what the opportunities are for partnering with Invest Alberta. Uh, had a chance to call in to Counselor Bressi and Counselor, uh, Blackburn's Municipal Policing Advisory Committee, uh, their orientation, and just bring a quick greetings on behalf of council and thank them and, uh, for the work that they do in our community, uh, along with many, many other people that volunteer on our boards and committees. So thank you to anyone that does take the time to put their name forward and volunteer on our committees, it's truly appreciated. Also attended the meeting, uh, Zoom meeting with MLA Allard, and the brought greetings on Friday, as mentioned, at the Women of Influence Awards. Congratulations to all the nominees, as well as the three winners that were identified earlier. Today, uh, I had two International Women's Day events over lunch, as Counselor Bressi mentioned. I was in and out of the AUMA one, but I was, um, one of three guest speakers on the International Women's Day M N P Peace Region, um, presentation. The, the theme this year being choose to challenge was a great conversation. Um, the other two presenters were Bridget Henninger, uh, who was a past and first female regional firm leader within the organization and a, and an entrepreneur within our region, and Daniel Sherwick, who is the owner of, um, two now, um, local hair salons, The Headroom, um, and a second location recently opened, and, and great to hear different perspectives from the, um, from the two other women in regards to entrepreneurship in our region, um, and, uh, nice to talk about, uh, what it is, uh, what you can do to challenge, to choose to cha- to take the challenge. And one thing that I highlighted, and I think is very sort of important, um, as we close off tonight, is I choose to challenge people, uh, to find some hope in, in, in the days ahead and, and offer some positive messaging. Right now, uh, things are, can sometimes be tough and, and- Right now, things are, can sometimes be tough, and, and people are not always in the best place right now, but if you're able to recognize people's successes, say the nice, kind words, and simply listen to people when they need to hear, have, have an ear to listen to, it's truly appreciated. So if you can choose to be kind, it would really be appreciated in our community today and always. So with that, I will close, and I wish you all a good rest of your evening. Thank you. Bye everyone.
I guess, I guess I didn't get to give my report tonight.
I think, are we still on? Okay, we're good. I am so sorry councillor O'Toole, when I went around the camera, I didn't see your image. So last but not least, definitely on any respect, councillor O'Toole, please bring your, your roundtable and any committee reports that you may have.
All right, I thought that you thought I wasn't around, so that's okay. I feel like I'm not part of the team, girl.
Oh, I apologize. I am so sorry.
I attended the Alberta Municipal Combat sports Commission, it's a provincial, basically getting back to having competitive sports in the province. We're on that, we're going forward, and what I can tell you over the last probably eight months, is the fact that all the commissions at one time didn't really talk to each other, there was some hamonosity, and what this has done is brought all seven commissions into the forefront, and we're working together to solve a lot of problems. And I will have a, an update, what we plan on doing in the next three weeks or so. I do have Community Futures later this week, and I have the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association later this week as well. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, Francophone and Francophone organization, what the city belongs to, is no longer on our list, and I don't know why, and neither is the competitive sports on our list, it's in the council member reports. So if I can get looked after and put back on the list, that'd be really good.
Thank you for that. Anything further councillor O'Toole?
No, I appreciate all the time that you give me.
I apologize for that. Next time, you can have councillor Thiessen's time. So thank you for that councillor, update councillor O'Toole, and I will now say goodbye and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you everyone.
Goodbye.